It's been, it's been motioned by, uh, by Commissioner, Commissioner Love it. And seconded by Commissioner Fields that we adopt our November twenty twenty meeting agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Our agenda is adopted. Commissioners at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve our October meeting minutes.
To move.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner McKnight that we approve our October meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Our October meeting minutes are approved. Let's see. Our first agenda item is under new business. It's case number two zero two zero V dash zero one one. What happened? I lost my screen.
I'm sorry, I was pulling up the case number.
Our first cases, case number two zero two zero V dash zero one one zero seven thirteen oh five Willingham Drive, East Point, Georgia. Um, staff, would you, uh, would you sound this agenda item?
Absolutely. The first case for this evening is for a variance case look for thirteen oh five Willingham Drive. Case number twenty twenty B is in Victor dash zero one one dash zero seven. The applicant, Mr. Matthew Zaki, the owner thirteen oh five Willingham Drive LLC. The zoning is light industrial and Ward B, and the applicant seeks a variance for relief from rear setback from thirty feet to zero feet. This is a site plan showing where the property is located. Um, as stated, the property is located within the I one light industrial zoning um, on Willingham Drive. As you can see, it is across from residential neighborhoods. It is located within the town center sub area future land use designation, which is a predominantly um, industrial land use. Um, there were some questions last week in regards to the applicant's intent, which was a variance to develop a dispatch center. And a lot of concern was around the tractor trailers that would be coming in and out of that neighborhood. Um, this is an email the applicant received that I did send to you all, I mean, to the commissioners um, to answer your questions. Mr. Chair, would you like me to read through it?
Uh, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Anthony. Um, this is the feedback I received from the owner from thirteen, thirteen oh five Willingham Drive. This location will be in no shape or form a warehouse or a temporary location of storage, excuse me, of storage and or parking of any goods. The business is an intermodal type business. The tractors will be picking up containers from rail yards and cargo ships and delivering those whole containers to their required destination. There will be no hazmat type materials transported. This location will be strictly a dispatch center with only dispatch employees. It will not be a break break bulk center or warehouse. No goods will be on site at any time during the hours of operation, either in the dispatch center or outside. Only a few tractors will occasionally park at this location. There might be occasional empty containers parked there as well, if any at all. Willingham Drive is uses access for all the industrial parcels located off Willingham. I understand our residential properties on the other side of the street. However, the access to these residential homes are via other local roads, and they're not directly accessed by Willingham. The hours of operation are from seven o'clock to AM to six o'clock PM. Um, after analysis analyzing a lot of what we, um, the comments that we got and a lot of the concerns that you all expressed, staff is recommending denial. Uh, staff expects that the approval of this variance would allow the applicant to establish a dispatch business despite tractor trailers that would negatively impact the nearby residents due to the amount of noise pollution and wear of, and wear and tear of roads that the tractor trailers may create.
Aye.
And the applicant is present if there are any questions.
Sorry about that. Um, I was, that was, uh, that was our chairman on the phone. I'm gonna go ahead and while he jumps on, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, read the, uh, the rules for public hearing. Whereas the city of East Point rules for public hearing are read into the record. Public hearings before the planning and zoning commission shall be conducted in accordance with section ten dash two two one nine of the East Point zoning code and development regulations as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in, in favor of the proposal for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total number of speakers provided, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall only speak to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration, shall address remarks only to the commission and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The provide, excuse me, the presiding officer may refuse a speaker the right to continue if, after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum. You've heard our meetings, you've heard our rules for public hearings. There is additional language in regards to online meetings and Zoom meetings that I would like to share with you all as well. Conducting public meetings remotely is a new process for most local governments. Due to the coronavirus outbreak and regulations on physical distancing, the planning and zoning commission has recently started using Zoom to hold its meetings while making available for the public to join remotely. The public began using this online platform to hold public meetings in April twenty twenty. These, it's those attending the Zoom meetings are reminded that there are public meetings with established rules of procedure and decorum, which will still be followed to the extent reasonably possible. The meetings are held to address zoning business in the city and of that, and anybody participating in the virtual meeting will be expected to follow in the rules of public, public speaking at these meetings. Those in attendance shall, excuse me, those in attendance have, have either accessed the meeting via phone or a webinar link. Unless you are an applicant or representative of an applicant actively addressing the commission, I ask you that you mute your microphone. Unless you signed up to make public, public comment on a particular agenda item prior to the calling of this meeting as set forth in the public notice, you will only be allowed to listen to the meeting. You will not be allowed to speak. The standard rules of procedure require a person who wishes to address the commission during the meeting to fill out a card, a card providing his or her name, address, and to identify the item he or she chooses to speak about. Since no one will, will be physically present, applicants or an applicant's representative wish, wishing to address the commission have already signed up and identified themselves. They will be called upon by the chair based on the sign up. Some members of the public have, have also emailed comments to the planning and zoning email address prior to the calling of this meeting and those, and those emailed comments will be noted and read for the record when a particular item is being, is called after the applicant's, uh, presentation to the commission has been completed. Additionally, some members of the public may have left a message with the planning and zoning department prior to the calling of this meeting requesting an opportunity to comment on a particular agenda items over the phone during this meeting. I need to get a drink of water. Those individuals who will be called by staff immediately prior to the calling of the agenda item in which they have expressed an interest and given an opportunity to listen to proceedings on the item or, and to address the commission at the appropriate time. Wow, there's a lot more to go. People both opposing and favoring the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address a commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. However, understanding that this is a new platform and may take longer logistically, we have, we have been relatively liberal with time until we get used to this new format. By majority vote, the commission had, may increase the total number of speakers side is given the, the same amount of time. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. After the allotted time expires, the microphone of the speaker then when speaking will be muted by the host. After speakers for and against an agenda item have been given a full opportunity under these rules to address the commission, the public hearing will be closed and the commission shall discuss the case before its members. Members of the public are not allowed to, to speak during the commissioners deliberation. While not speaking, please mute your microphones to avoid background noise that can be disturbing to the meeting. If you fail to do so, the host will do so for you. Also, should any recognized speaker desire for the commission to view a document at any time, please request that the host find and share the document. Due to security concerns, no one other than the host will be prepared, will be permitted to share the meeting screen. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Each speaker must speak only upon, speak only, each speaker shall only, each speaker shall speak only upon being recognized by the chair and only to the merits of the proposed zoning case under consideration, shall redress marks only to the commissioners and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The chair may refuse a speaker the right to continue if, after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum or the violator shall be removed from the Zoom meeting upon request of the chair. Please understand that staff will be multitasking a lot during the meeting and may not be able to respond to a chat inquiry immediately if at all. However, should you experience technical difficulties during the meeting, please feel free to use the chat feature on the Zoom screen and staff will attempt to assist you. We thank you for your patience and understanding as we work through these challenging times with this new technology. That is the last of it. Is Sean, is our chairman on the call now?
I am. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair, and my apologies to the commissioners and others who are in attendance. I just completely got time mixed up tonight. Um, I thought I had a little more time.
We're glad you're here.
Okay, no worries. So it looks like we are now opening the public hearing and can I see the agenda so that I can get the case number, please?
One second.
All right, thank you.
Can you all see the screen?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, um, just so that I am caught up, we're now on agenda item eight, new business, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, you've heard the rules for our public hearings. Um, at this time, I entertain a motion commissioners to open the public hearing for case number two zero two zero V is in Victor dash zero one one dash zero seven.
Motion open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Fan, that we open the public hearing for case number two zero two zero V is in Victor dash zero one one dash zero seven. All in favor sound aye.
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 All opposed sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Do we have our applicant, uh, Mr. Zaki, uh, present?
I'm right here.
Okay, um, Mr. Zaki, you're to state your first and last name and your current address, and then you can present your case.
Sure. Uh, my name is Matthew Zaki. I'm with Pinnacle Land Planning and Engineering. I'm located eighty thirty Magnolia Way, uh, instead of Roswell. Um, just as we, uh, presented that last week, um, I'm here on behalf of the owners of M and J Intermodel Inc. Uh, it's a business that was founded in two thousand. It's a trucking company uh, located in Chicago and, uh, there are other offices throughout. Uh, just wanted to also make sure that I, uh, I, uh, mentioned that the, uh, one of the owners is actually present, uh, with us on the, uh, on the Zoom meeting. Uh, he's here to answer any other questions that have to do with the operation of the, uh, business. Uh, the parcel address is, uh, at thirteen oh five Willingham Drive and, uh, just to kind of give you a little bit of, um, uh, location, uh, it's between Pennsylvania Avenue from the west and Bachelor Street from the east. Uh, it's, uh, the, the proposed building is gonna be about fourteen hundred square feet, uh, and it is gonna be about twenty-three feet by sixty feet. And it's, uh, it's gonna be for a dispatch center, uh, for a trucking company. Um, the reason for the variance, uh, the, the location of the site is actually in a very challenging site, uh, as for, in regards to the flood plain. Uh, the flood plain is actually, um, uh, there's flood plain located on the, uh, on the site and not just a flood plain, there is a floodway. And because of the, uh, the ordinance of the city of, um, of East Point, uh, we are not allowed to encroach into the floodway with any kind of buildings. That's, that's why we are actually requesting the variance from, uh, from thirty to zero. Um, if, if we do not get that variance, uh, that, you know, that parcel is gonna be rendered pretty much unbuildable, uh, if we're not granted that variance. Um, uh, there, there, the email that was sent that answered some of the questions in regards to the, uh, to the type of operation uh, and the, uh, business, uh, the, uh, uh, our operations, uh, there, there, if I'd be more than glad to answer any other questions if there are any. And again, as I mentioned, uh, Mr. Rizik is on here, uh, Nabil Rizik is on here to answer any other questions that have to do with the operations.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaki. Uh, at this time, we only hear from the applicant and those who are here to speak in favor and those to speak against. There will not be any questions until there is a motion and if only a commissioner has a question, but thank you. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Seeing none and hearing none, are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Hearing none, I stand on commissioners at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Was it closed, public hearing, Mr. Chair?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Bell, that we close the public hearing for case number two zero two zero V is in Victor dash zero one one dash zero seven. All in favor sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Staff recommends denial for, um, the variance request for thirteen oh five Willingham. Staff expects that the approval of this variance would allow the applicant to establish a dispatch business that would negatively impact the nearby residents due to the amount of noise pollution and wear and tear of roads that the tractor trailers may create.
Okay, commissioners, you prefer the applicant. You've also heard staff's recommendation that this time I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion.
Commissioner Tucker Todd, I am losing part of what you're saying.
Mr. Chair, I would make a, I'd like to make a motion to, to deny.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Bell, that this body denies, um, the application for the variance. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Uh, comment, please.
Okay, Commissioner Fields, I believe that's what, that's, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, Commissioner Fields, you have the floor.
Okay, don't, um, the, uh, the original request was for variance before, for, for the flood zone, but the fact of the matter is that they want to park, uh, eighteen wheeled trucks over there as well. So that's part of, uh, the decision I believe that, uh, we're making to deny this request. Um, it's a light industrial, uh, area and, uh, it's not suitable for heavy trucks in my opinion, so, um, that's, that's, that's my comment on it. I, I.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fields. Are there any more comments, questions, or concerns from the commission? Hearing none, I stand on the, the motion on the floor is to deny. The motion was made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by, no, the motion was made by Commissioner Fan, correct?
Uh, it's my motion.
The motion was made by, I'm sorry, the motion was made by Commissioner Tucker Todd to deny. It was seconded by Commissioner.
Bell.
Bell, okay, I'm sorry. The motion is denied. All in favor sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The motion is denied. The variance is denied. Our next agenda item is two zero two zero U is an umbrella does zero zero three does zero nine. The applicant is, uh, Natanya Walker. This particular agenda item is a special use variance, also requires a public hearing. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner McKnight, that we open the public hearing. All in favor sound aye.
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 All opposed sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Is our applicant, Ms. Walker, present this evening?
Yes, I am, Mr. Atkins.
Okay, Ms. Walker, if you could state your first and last name and your current address and you can present your case.
Yes, my name's Natanya Walker. My current address is two four four two Plantation Drive, East Point, Georgia, three zero three four four, and I'm, um, requesting a special use permit to convert my existing detached garage into a guest house. And I know last time we spoke, um, last week that you were asking for pictures and more details, so I created a presentation, um, that has pictures. I'm sorry.
Go forward. Um, is, are the children at your residence?
They, they are. Let me, let me see if I can get them to go or just stop talking because they're in another room. Hold it for one minute, please.
Sure, I can hear everything you said. I want the commission to have the benefit of hearing your entire presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, so hopefully you can hear me better now. Okay, um, yes, my name's Natanya Walker. I live at two four four two Plantation Drive and I'm requesting a special use, use permit to convert an existing garage into a guest house. And, um, I had created a presentation that had pictures and answers some of the questions that y'all had last week. Um, so I have that available. If I could pull that up.
Did you share that with staff already?
I did.
That's in the presentation for this evening.
Okay.
Um, I can go ahead. Are you done, Ms. Walker?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, this is the site plan of the property. The primary structure, um, is one thousand six hundred and seventy-four square feet. The habitable access.
Tony, Tony, we're not able to see your screen.
Yeah, um, Tony. Um, if you could upload the presentation, uh, Ms. Ross, please correct me from incorrect. The applicant has to present. Staff cannot present for the applicant. Is that correct? You're on mute?
Um, that is correct. Um, the applicant said that she's finished, but I'm not sure that she was clear as to what, uh, Mr. Austin was referring to because she has not really presented her case yet.
Chair, Chairman?
Yes.
Atkins, may I ask the question, please? Um, we did not, the, the staff did not get the opportunity to sound this, this case. It went straight to the public hearing. We usually give the opportunity to sound the case.
Yes, absolutely. Staff, would you please sound case, um, this particular agenda item, case number two zero two zero U is an umbrella does zero zero three does zero nine.
This is a use permit case for twenty four forty-two Plantation Drive, case number twenty twenty U is an umbrella dash zero zero three dash zero nine. The applicant is Mr. Tonya Walker. The owner is also Mr. Tonya Walker, located in the R one single family dwelling zoning and the applicant seeks a special use permit to convert her current existing garage into a guest house. On the screen is the site plan that shows the habitable accessory structure, proposed habitable accessory structure as well as the primary structure. The primary is one thousand six hundred and seventy-four square feet. The habitable accessory structure is four hundred and four square feet, which is below the fifty percent minimum requirement. As stated, the property is within the R one single family residential zoning district and is within the suburban residential future land use designation. The applicant did submit photos of the property for this evening's presentation. On the left is the primary structure and on the right is where the current garage sits. She has submitted the floor plan showing the living room, kitchen, bedroom, closet, and bathroom, as well as a rendering of what that, um, design would look like. There's also an exterior rendering of the proposed aesthetically compatible exterior. And staff recommends approval for the special use permit for subject site located at twenty four forty-two Plantation Drive.
Okay, so we are, we are actually out of sequence. So we're actually still in the public hearing, which was, um, a part of my point. So we only needed to hear, we're, Ms., um, Walker actually still has the floor. So we're not yet ready for staff's, um, recommendation. So, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Are you done presenting your case?
Well, I, I have a presentation that I was, um, well, I put together, uh, that I was gonna present. If I can share that or it can be shared, I can do that.
Okay, that was my, is it different from what staff just presented, what, that what staff just showed us?
Well, you know, it, it goes over, I guess, each, um, point in the, um, the, the code that, um, my property has to meet in order to, um, obtain a special use permit. And so I was breaking that down, so if you want additional information, I have that within that presentation.
No, you have the ability to do that. Really, when I was asking the question about your presentation, I wanted to make sure you can't share your screen. So I wanted to make sure that you had sent your presentation to staff. So staff is, we're a little out of order now because now staff has given a recommendation and we really only needed to sound the case. We're still in the public hearing. You have the opportunity to, to present your case. So again, my question is, the presentation that you would like to make to us, does staff have that presentation?
Ms. Walker, do you want to present the presentation yourself? Do you have it available?
I mean, I, I, I did send it over as a file. Um, if you can pull it up, if, if it's necessary, then let's, let's go for it.
Because it's not the opportunity for staff to present. We're in a public hearing. Staff doesn't present for applicants.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Let's go. I just can't change the screen, so I'll just tell you when to change the screen. Okay, so this is for the habitable accessory structure, um, code section ten dash twenty-one thirty, uh, two four four two Plantation Drive, um, garage conversion. You can change the screen now. Okay, so this is just general information about, uh, my project as it pertains to the, um, the code. Next screen. All right, so here's some details about my garage. Um, it's actually located in the, the rear of my home. It's already existing, so did the hatch, the detached garage approximately eight, a four hundred eighty-four square footage, located about twenty-nine feet behind, um, the primary principal structure, which is, um, sixteen seventy-four square footage. And this is the, the criteria that it needs, which is, um, point three, that the accessory structure cannot be built or moved onto any lot before construction of the main house unless a building permit has been issued for the construction of the main house. Next screen. All right, here's some more details. Um, so I've lived here for over six years and my entire backyard is fenced in. Um, the lot is approximately, uh, let me go back, please. All right, thank you. The lot is approximately, um, twenty, um, Um, the lot is approximately, uh, let me go back, please. All right, thank you. The lot is approximately twenty thousand two hundred and eighty square footage lot. And the criteria that it meets is that the property must reside either in the, I'm sorry, the owner, the owner of the property must reside either in the principal structure or the accessory structure on the premise. So I reside in the house, and my lot meets or exceeds the, the minimum square footage. Next slide, please. All right, and here's some more details about the garage, that it is approximately twelve feet and ten inches in height. Um, and once again, my house is sixteen seventy-four square footage. And the total floor area does not exceed fifty percent of the principal structure or the rear lot coverage. And as required, utilities will feed from the principal structure. So right now, it does have two twenty, sorry, two hundred and twenty voltage of power to it now. So these are the criterias that it meets. Um, point A, eight, I'm sorry, point eight, the height must not exceed the height of the main house or thirty-five feet, whichever is less. And the total floor area cannot exceed fifty percent of the floor area of the principal structure or exceed fifty percent of the rear lot coverage, and all utilities for structure must be fed from the primary structure, in which it will. Next slide, please. All right, so this is what I got from the public records of the city, just kind of showing that my house is, in fact, sixteen seventy-four square footage. And this is the blue area is the main house, and just the purple area is like a little gray deck back there. So that's my parcel number right there. Next slide, please. All right, so here's some projects, the project site information. Um, the garage is twenty-nine feet away from the principal structure, so it exceeds the requirements. It's twenty-one feet from the property line. If you can see towards the right side of the garage, that's where it was measured, and it's twenty-one feet from there. And then my neighbor has a shed on the other side of that fence, which is, I measured it as twenty-one point six feet from the shed, so it meets the requirements there as well. And so there are houses on the right and the left of my property line. Um, and towards the rear, it's just land that I own as well. And so it meets criteria ten. The structure must be at least six feet away from the principal structure. So it's twenty-nine feet away, and the structure must be at least six, three, at least three feet from all property lines, and at least fifteen feet from any structure of adjoining properties, and it meets that as well. Next slide, please. All right, so, um, just some additional information. This is a proposed for floor plan. Which includes a living room, bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, closet. Um. Just one moment, please. I'm sorry about that. They're in another room, but it's kind of small here. All right, so, um, so we're not, we're not requesting any variance, because the site will meet our requirements for the habitable, habitable accessory structure, including adding one more unobstructed parking spot to the location to meet the requirements of three unobstructed parking spots. So currently, I have two. I'll be adding another one. Um, and, uh, see here, and the other criteria, because it's not fully built out, um, is the full kitchen slash kitchenette, and also the aesthetically compatible design. And the voltage, voltage requirements will also be included on a blueprint as well as the build out. Um, and that can, any other additional measurements can be viewed in the site plan. Can you go to the next slide, please? All right, so this picture to the left, which is where my van is, that's gonna be the location. As you can see, I know there was a concern about the garage in comparison to other garages on the street or in the area, which, as I explained before, I've seen, you know, different things throughout the, the area, but I did want to point out is that my driveway and my property is pretty long, so from the street view and a car park there, it's not going to really be noticeable. Um. Just from location, so that's, that's not even street view. That's actually under the tree, because street view, there's, there's five trees in front of my house. But to the right is gonna be the location of the additional parking spot. And over here to the right picture is the right side of the shed, which is, actually, I'm sorry, it's the left side coming from behind, just to show where my neighbor's shed is, their house, and the, the distance between my shed or my garage and their shed. Um, next picture, please. All right, so please excuse my clothes on the clothesline. So this is just highlighting that I have a private backyard. My entire backyard is fenced in, and it has shrubs and things like that along the fence, so it's very, very private. Um, that's showing on the left side, just coming from an angle of the driveway into the backyard. And to the right side is actually showing the land that goes all the way to the back, where there's no property and actually, or no houses. And actually, I own that property back there as well. Um, next, next slide. All right, so this is, um, just another view, three D view of the proposed floor plan. Um. And you can go to the next, next slide here. All right, so with this view, just please disregard the, the difference in the fence and the pictures, because the program only allows certain type of fences and things like that. But this is a proposed aesthetically compatible exterior. It's not photorealistic, so basically, it's already a cedar block, uh, building. Um, my contractors had made a few suggestions in regards to just maybe painting it. Um, I was thinking of keeping more of a neutral color, so gray to me is a neutral color. And it's more so just putting fresh paint, or if possible, maybe some panels, it depends on the budget, um, on the garage, but that's the color that we're trying to probably go for, because it's already that color anyways. And so it's not gonna be much of a difference. We're not going for anything bright and just off the top or anything like that. Um. And if you can see towards the right, um, this, once again, is not photorealistic, and it's not measured to measure, so that's kind of just ideas to where the parking space is going to be located at. Um, next slide, please. Um, well. I actually had a video, three D video walkthrough. Um, Mr. Austin, is it able to play or no?
No.
Okay, well, it's not able to play. So you can go to the next one. All right, and I just wanted to highlight, I know with an application, it was asking, how did this relate to the comprehensive future development plans of East Point? And I just was looking through that at the time when I was putting the application together, and I see the goals are to incorporate or encourage accessory dwelling units, so just pointing that out right there. Um, and next slide, Ms. Austin. And thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walker. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor?
I did receive, um, receive an email from a Mr. Jonathan DeJoy um, stating his support and granting especiallys permit for case twenty twenty U, that is, there's a three, there's a non to convert existing garage into a guest house.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against? Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning matter? Any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Hearing on CNN, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we close the public hearing for case number two zero two zero U as an umbrella dash zero zero three dash zero nine. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, you now may present your recommendation.
Ms. Natania Walker seeks a special use permit to convert existing garage into a guest house at twenty-four forty-two Plantation Drive. Uh, she has already shown her site plan in her presentation that addresses these square footages for the primary structure, as well as the habitable accessory structure. It is within the R one single-family residential zoning district within the suburban residential future land use designation. She has shown you the photos that she has sent to us, as well as her site design and floor plan and renderings. Staff recommends approval for the special use permit request for subject site located at twenty-four forty-two Plantation Drive.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, you've heard staff's recommendation, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, and make sure, before you do, Commissioner Miller, because this is a special use permit, make sure the motion is in the form of a recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we uh, approve staff's recommendation.
Or, which is approval for the case, correct?
For the case, yes.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Bell, that this body recommends approval of this agenda item. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
Mr. Chair, have a comment, please.
Commissioner Tucker Todd, you have the floor. Joel, I think you've got stuck. Um, I missed what you said. I don't know if everyone else did. It seemed that you got stuck on my end. Can you repeat that, please, Joel?
Yeah, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
I can hear you now.
I was just, I was just letting Ms. Walker know that in the years I've been on the commission, that was one of the best presentations from a citizen that I've seen. She clearly had taken a lot of time and effort to.
I wholeheartedly agree, yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Any more comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, Commissioner, there's a motion on the floor to recommend approval. The motion was made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Bell. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Ms. Walker, this body recommends approval, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is two zero two zero U as an umbrella dash zero zero four dash zero one zero. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Case number twenty twenty U as an umbrella dash zero zero four dash zero one zero, at the subject site twenty-seven fifty-eight Felton Drive. The applicant, Mr. Ray Neal, is requesting a special use permit to establish a place of worship, um, within a special use permit parameters. He has also requested a, to withdraw this application, and that withdrawal was sent to you all via email as well.
Okay, Commissioners, um, thank you, Mr. Um, Mr. Austin. Um, we did advertise this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, Commissioners, because we've advertised this, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number two zero two zero U as an umbrella dash zero zero four dash zero one zero. Let us not all speak at once, please.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We move by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Tucker Todd, that we open the public hearing for two zero two zero U as an umbrella dash zero zero four dash zero one zero. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Is the applicant, Mr. Neal, present?
No, sir.
Okay, are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this case? Hearing on CNN, are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Hearing on CNN, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Staff recommends withdrawal for a special use permit for a place of worship located at subject property twenty-seven fifty-eight Felton Drive. Um, please disregard, this is, the presentation is incorrect. We recommend withdrawal per the applicant's request.
Okay, thank you. Is, Commissioners, we've heard staff's recommendation, and we've also um, come to understand that the applicant has submitted a formal written request to withdraw, and this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to withdraw.
Okay, is there a second? Is that, your motion is to accept the withdrawal, is that correct, Commissioner Tucker?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to accept the withdrawal made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Lovett. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing on CNN, Commissioners, at this time, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This body approves the withdrawal. Our next agenda item. Are we at twenty twenty zero zero dash zero zero six dash zero nine?
Yes.
Okay, our next agenda item is two zero two zero 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 dash zero zero six dash zero nine. Um, this is a text amendment. The city has the applicant. Um, this, I believe, we have also had a public hearing on before. Am I correct, staff?
Yes.
Okay, um, at this time, we will, um, hear staff's recommendation.
Staff recommends approval with conditions that were sent via email, and I have those list of conditions. I don't know if you want me to go through all of them.
Yes, Mr. Austin, could you sound the item, please?
Yes, case number twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty M dash zero zero six dash zero nine. Citywide, um, text amendment to City of East Point Comprehensive Plan Update Twenty Seventeen Community Goals Section to Incorporate the City East Point Agriculture Plan.
Okay, um, and staff's recommendation?
Is approval with conditions.
Okay, would you sound those conditions, please? Yes.
I'm gonna actually share them on the screen. Um, the applicant, the Food Bowl Alliance Group Steering Committee sent conditions for approval. Um, the following revisions will be made to the City of East Point Agriculture Plan to respond to the City of East Point Planning and Zoning Commission's comments given November twelfth. Introduction, general cultivating flowers will be explicitly included as a part of the urban agriculture definition. Community engagement, page thirteen of the list of gardens or trees from Atlanta Local Food Initiative data. Two food producing stations will be provided, River Park Orchard and Colonial Hills Neighborhood Garden. They may currently exist but cannot be verified via satellite or street level imagery. If not verified in the field, they will be removed. The following list of sites have been verified by Google Satellite or local news articles, and each has continued to support their gardens, either donated by the Atlanta Local Food Initiative or other organizations such as Trees Atlanta, Concrete Jungle, Jungle, and Captain Planet.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Priority B, supporting local growers. Recommendation B one will be changed from accommodate to advocate. Recommendation B two will include language that stresses that enforcement and potential costs to taxpayers be considered when implementing a separate irrigation rate for urban growers. It will also include suggestions and case studies on how to best enforce a separate irrigation rate to be used for growing food. A preliminary example includes San Francisco's Community Garden Irrigation Mutant Grant Program that sets budgets for water. The water budgeting process first evaluates an annual amount of water needed at garden site to maintain proper plant health and sets water limits that the garden manager cannot exceed. The program also offers training to garden managers on water efficient techniques. Information on water wise practices will also be included in the online database per recommendation B three. Recommendation B three will also explicitly state that the resource list, list lives on East Point's website, but can also live on others. Priority C, establishing local role of government, the role of local government. Recommendation C two will include the following changes. Will incorporate language stressing that the recommendation does not aim to reduce density or stop growth, but work within the existing future lands policy to also make it easier for, for people to start a garden or farm, whether that be on the ground or via vertical or rooftop methods in dense areas. whether that be on the ground or via vertical or rooftop methods in dense areas. Will provide data and case studies on how community gardens and farmers markets tend to increase property values and often cited in real estate advertisements as community assets. Will provide case studies about how multifamily and even multifamily developments, multi-use developments are incorporating urban agriculture as an amenity, such as buggy works, regi development in East Point. Recommendation C three will also incorporate growing opportunities on private property, i.e. housing authority land, particularly senior housing. A new addition recommendation C seven targets economic development efforts and initiatives to further elevate and locate food distribution centers to assure a holistic community food system. Priority D, recommendation D two will include seed libraries, i.e. small distribution of seeds via the little free library model in addition to the seed bank. Recommendation D three will include Think Green as a support organization. Page sixty-nine will include East Point's existing branding goals as an international city, a community of the future, and explain how a brand of local food destination works with, rather plays against the existing brand. This section will speak to the quality of life improvements that a local food system brings and how providing for access to local food and community room space and supporting urban agriculture entrepreneurship meet that overarching branding except objective of a progressive city. This section will also provide examples of how these brands can coexist with case studies of other international cities that have extensive urban agriculture programs, such as New York and San Francisco.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Commissioners, we've heard the recommendation from staff, which is to approve the urban agriculture plan with its conditions. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
In the case number two zero two zero Z dash zero zero six, dash, zero, nine, I, um, I recommend that we approve staff's recommendations for approval with conditions.
The conditions are stated by staff, correct?
Stated by staff.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair, for discussion, for further discussion.
Sure, the motion is to approve the urban agriculture plan and the conditions are stated by staff. The motion was made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fan. Comments, questions, or concerns?
All right, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fayan.
Okay, one is, and I know we seen in the chat where someone says that public hadn't had a chance to review it, and I don't know what that process is in terms of the plan, but I saw that in the chat. I'm sure there's others of you saw it, too. The other thing that I want, Tony, if you would go back to the conditions, I want to just be clear on, on a condition that you stated a couple of them. Let's go all the way back to the beginning, uh, where you talked about the, yeah, community engagement. Let's talk more about that. Uh, are we saying, are we saying to, to the public in this plan that we're only having two community neighborhood site, and that would be River Park and Colonial Hill? If that's, if that's the condition that you're putting on this and this, um, this is a question of staff.
These are the recommendations that were provided by, um, the steering committee, and we, um, recommend approval with these conditions based on what we, um, analyzed.
Okay, I mean, the question I'm asking, Tony, is this the only two location that we're talking about having a neighborhood, community garden? Or, uh, that's what I'm asking. There are two sites that's listing here, and I'm asking the question, are these the only two sites that being recommended are with these conditions?
No, I think these are just the two food producing spaces that are gonna be there. And the applicant is present from, from that group, if you wanna give more information from them.
Well, I would like to get more information, because if you can't answer that question, somebody need to answer it, because I want, I want, I want clarity on that.
Yes, sir, I can speak on that. This is to, uh, say an email with the agricultural steering committee. Uh, so actually, what this particular section is highlighting is the fact that there were sites that were actually listed in the plan that wanted to provide further verification of their existence. The two sites that you're speaking of, what we actually stated is that they're not verifiable via satellite or street level imagery. So what we're gonna actually be doing is doing a more face-to-face evaluation to make sure that they are there and operational. If they are not, then we are stating that the condition that we will apply is removing them from the actual plan. Uh, but there's actually three sites that are listed within the document that are in existence, uh, that have been verified by a satellite or a street level imagery. Uh, I know for a fact that there's more, but these are the ones that were actually specifically listed at the time when we.
Why would we have them there if we're not clear on their existence? That, that's one, because if we make it out of condition, then it needs to be clear, either they are or they're not. This, that's, that's just where I'm coming from. Others may feel different, but, but that's the way I feel. The other thing is, I know that the, we already have the, um, agricultural zoning, and it's already in place, uh, I believe, and staff can address that, that, you know, you can do up to an acre of land, uh, for what you're talking about doing. All, that, I just wanna get some clarity on what we're doing in terms of this proposal that we're doing, because there are other people, and I keep seeing people, other people have said to me, when are we gonna get a chance to review what is being recommended as the citizen? When, when will this open up to us before you make recommendations to, to, uh, to the man council that this should be a part of our comprehensive plan? So, help me to understand, uh, how does this fit? Because with, what we already have in existence in terms of our agricultural zoning.
Uh, yes, sir, so, uh, your point is correct. There is an actua, uh, actual agricultural zoning that can be applied for those that fit within those criteria. And what this plan actually does is close the loop on an entire food system. So, the agricultural production side is just one portion of that system. Uh, we also have other parts that have been highlighted in those sections, such as the distribution side of this system, uh, the policy side of the system involving the actual municipal government. Uh, then we have the educational component, uh, as well as the integration of people who are not running businesses, because I want to be clear, farms are businesses. Gardens are not. Gardens are something that people do for personal, uh, production, and so we want to also create synergy between all of those parts of the food system. Uh, last, I'll close with, uh, the actual uh, source of where people access the food, whether it be the farmer's market, grocery stores, cooperatives. This is about tying an entire food system together, not just the agricultural production side, but that is, of course, one of the main parts, because without production, you don't have the other parts to work together.
You know, we talked about this last week, and I asked that question about farming and gardening. You know, they don't interchange, even though we say they interchange, but they don't. It's a difference between gardening and farm, okay? So I want, I just want to make sure that we're clear, we're going down the, um, right path here, even with the language that we're using, because I know how people are, but in terms of interpretation of language, what we say and what we believe and what we think we're doing, when it comes someplace else, it's gonna be totally different. So we have to be very careful going down the road to make sure that we're saying the right things that you really wanna do. I think you're more part of, and from where I'm coming from, more on the educational piece in terms of educating people on how to garden, uh, and what it takes to garden and those kind of thing. I think that's the selling point. For me, that's what you're trying to do. For those people interested in gardening, this is how we can help you garden, and I know you talked about other things, you know, but I think that's more where I am, because, you know, like I told you last week, I, I may start a little flower garden, I think I could be low price. But anyway, that's another story.
Yes, thank you.
I'm done.
Um, Commissioners, I have a comment, please.
Yes, Commissioner Phil, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I had, um, reviewed the plan, hopefully in its entirety, and I hope that I dissected it properly. I sent out a, um, an email to all of the commissioners stating what I thought was the intent of this agricultural plan is presented by, um, ARC and get, and Goodwill and Foodwell. And I think that what they're saying is that they want the city to be a pri, they want the city to prioritize farming as a, as an entity and it's within itself, and to create a, uh, an entrepreneurial, um, an entrepreneurial district. Uh, they also, uh, what I gained from that is that they want, even in our new multifamily, uh, places, to include gardens, not gardens but farms within those districts. Um, and to brand the city as a place of, uh, of, of, uh, farm or agricultural destination for people coming from throughout the land. And it goes beyond just making a garden or making a farm, because we do have agricultural, an agricultural district. And I was, my thing is that they should try to confine themselves to the agricultural district to do what they want to do, as opposed to making the city itself um, a farming district, and that's what I get from it. Uh, their recommendation in our section C two, as a matter of fact. Um, and they, they, I'm reading from it, says just over fifty percent of the city is zone residential. Uh, East Point's current residential zoning districts allow for a community garden, landscaping business, plant nurseries, which is all true. A garden centered with, uh, indoor retail component. In every residential category, however, an administrative permit is required. And the lot, and the lot must be one acre at a minimum. The average residential lot is just under half an acre, limiting the potential for smaller community gardens and urban farms in the residential districts. And it further goes on to say that four multifamily, um, use districts offer density bonuses in exchange for added amenities. This means a developer can add more units, and it's just saying that these zoning districts include, you know, R two, R three, R four, Cup, and RT. Um, the current zoning code offers varying densities, you know, so they're saying these things, so, um, I'd like to go to, um, just, just bear with me. Okay, page seventeen on their report. Just give me a second. Well, I read what I put in my thing, but the agriculture plan calls for ensuring urban agriculture can be a viable business and should be a planning priority. It further states that it is going to take entrepreneurs and people who can run a business. This plan also states that it's going to take incentives and resources to help support urban agriculture, and it states, and I quote, "Such incentives and resources are particularly important as starting an urban farm often involves steep costs for things like land, equipment, which can be prohibitive expenses for many potential urban growers. Further, running a farm also involves substantial cost for labor, planting, fertilization, water utilities, et cetera." Uh, the agriculture plan suggests that the city partner with these growers and adjust programs to help establish this entrepreneurial endeavor. So my question was, is the City of East Point willing to go that far, really? Um, does the city want to be in the business of farming? You know, and that's, that's what this, and you can go to the page seventeen of their plan. I'm trying to. Yeah, it's called supporting urban growers, and if you have that plan, you.
Mr. Phil, are you here for a question, please?
Yes.
Thanks so very much. Uh, is it any way possible, uh, Mr. Chair, that we can have staff to pull up that as he's going through that, so we can actually see, because I'm, I keep hearing in his language, the word farm, farm, and, and we're talking about gardening, farming, what are we talking about here? So, is there any way that we can have, uh, Mrs. Smith or Mr. Austin pull up that plan, so we can be on that page where he's on, so we're clear on what he's saying?
Or, um, if staff would do a share screening and pull those things up, um, and if we can move through these things, um, so that uh, everyone can see what, um, the commissioner is referring to. But I think that, um, uh, as a part of what, um, Mrs. Sinema was speaking of, farming and gardening are a part of the entire cycle. Um, but it, I don't think one is more prevalent than the other. It is to encourage all of those components as a part of the cycle, so, um. Mr. Phil, can you please tell Mr. Austin what page you're on, so he can find that page?
Okay, if you look at the page itself, it says thirty-three. But as you go through it, it's gonna be page seventeen.
What is it, seventeen or thirty-three?
Seventeen, that's, that's it right here. Somebody says, uh, supporting urban growers.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it's the, 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 uh, plan itself states that East, that East Point community members identified, ensuring urban agriculture can be a viable business. I guess these are the people that they spoke to at the forums and things that they, that they presented. Uh, in pursuing opportunities, he says, for the city to support local urban growers, a resident discussed, a resident discussed the importance of having the right programs in place to help attract the right businesses, because it's not going to take, it's not gonna just take community, it's going to take entrepreneurs and people who can run a business in order to have a successful community of local urban growers. Further, residents also expressed that developing incentives and policies to attract better businesses and entrepreneurships has a potential economic growth impact for the city. So, to me, that's saying that, um, these things do not exist at this time, but it's something that's got to be developed, as though you're gonna develop a corporationally, that you're gonna develop uh, some ongoing enterprise in the future to actually do these things. So it, it goes beyond just telling people that they should have, uh, you know, you can grow food in your backyard. Or, so they wanna take it, it's being taken out of the agricultural district itself, which is where farms should be done. But why should, so it's, it's, it's telling me that it's gonna be, uh, they want to develop entrepreneurial growers in this city. Uh, it also states in the beginning that, I'll go back to the page. If you go to the first page, as a matter of fact, you can get the intent of ARC, and you can get the intent of Foodwell. If you go up to page three, yeah, right, right, down one. Yeah, right here, where, where, it tells you ARC's vision. You see the vision statement right here? Their, their vision, ARC's vision is to, uh, is to create and protect spaces for agriculture. In other words, throughout the city, they want to create spaces. They want to find spaces within the city to create agriculture. That is their vision, and it's the last two lines of this particular proposal um, on the right-hand side, on the ARC. The Atlanta Regional Commission as a, the national, da-da-da-da-da-da, lives of our providing world-class infrastructure, building a competitive econ, economy. On the bottom, I'm sorry, why city agriculture planning? To protect and manage metro Atlanta's natural cultural resources. City agriculture planning aligns with two adopted policies outlined in the regional resource plan, creating and protecting space for urban farms. Gardens and orchards fulfills the plan's objectives to preserve passive green spaces as well as to preserve areas for local food production activities. So they're, they're saying they wanna actually carve out spots and spaces within the city so they can have, to have farming. And, and to me, East Point is not a place that they want to be farms, you know? People move here from other cities because it's close to Atlanta, it's close to the metropolitan area. Uh, they don't want to, in my opinion, be farmers or live next to farms. Otherwise, you know, farmers, it, to me, is in the, in the past.
Mr. Chair, my motion still stands.
Yes, that's, the motion on the floor is to approve, Mr. Miller. So, um, Mr. Mr. Phil, um, do you have additional items?
Well, actually, I have a, a bunch of them that, to me, it does, you know, it makes sense, but if, if the city, if you feel that the city wants to go ahead, go ahead with this plan, I'm, I gave you the information. I don't, uh, think that the city should be branded, uh, 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 a, a hub for farming, and that it should be part of our future plans. I think we should spend our time doing something more progressive. Spending the, the, uh, the, uh, the the resources of the city and the city. Spending the, 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 the resources of the city and the city government and what have you, not in creating farms, which this is a very nebulous plan, by the way, if you just read it all. It's nebulous to me. And I'm just doing my best to try to point out the, the, the differences as to what was presented as opposed to what it really says. And none of this is concrete. This is not a concrete plan. These are suggestions and recommendations. It's not a plan. So that, that's my opinion of it. And, and I wrote it out and tried to point out. But it's, it might take too long in these particular proceedings to go through every, every last one. It's not that I'm trying to be different or, or, or negative about it at all. I'm just trying to protect the integrity of the future development of the city. And this plan, although they took a lot of time trying to set it up, and they spent two years representing it. To me, it's still something that just because they did that doesn't mean that we have to accept it. So. That's why we tabled it at one of the meetings and, and so the people can have a, a chance to actually read the plan. And not just listen to the people making presentations. So, and they want to change the zoning. So we, in other words, eventually we don't have the zoning, you're gonna, you can put a farm in, in R two district, R three district, R four district, you can put a farm there? I mean, I mean. That, that's my, those are my objections.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Fields. And I just, yes, Commissioner Tucker Todd.
Can we call the question, please?
Yes. The motion on the floor is to approve. The motion was made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fan, with the conditions as stated by staff. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay.
Nay.
Okay, I think roll call vote, please. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fan?
Come back to me.
Commissioner McKnight?
Aye.
Commissioner Lovett?
No.
Commissioner Bryant? Commissioner Fields?
No.
Commissioner Fan?
No.
Okay, so we've. We've got, we've got currently three ayes and three nays. I break the tie and my vote is yes, the motion passes, the motion carries. Thank you. Let's move to our next agenda item.
Thank you, Commission.
Chairman Atkins.
Yes, Commissioner McKnight?
Chairman Atkins, this is Kimberly. I was gonna move on to sound the case, sir.
Okay, if you could, please, can we do screen share so we can see the agenda and the item, please?
Tony, are you able to share the screen for item number five?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could go back, my count was actually four ayes.
You're correct. It's Miller, you're correct, Camilla, Miller, Tucker Todd, McKnight and Bill. So you're correct.
But it's all right, you want to vote for it though, Sean, we got you.
Okay, oh, I definitely would have voted for it.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Okay, you're right. But that's all I wanted to do, right?
I know, I know. I just had another question you wouldn't let me do and call for that.
Yes. So we're gonna go to our next agenda item. Staff, would you please sound, is it two zero two zero, it was in Mary, that's zero zero five, that's one zero?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Yes, item number five, twenty twenty M dash zero zero five dash one zero. City of East Point is the applicant. The text amendment is citywide. The applicant seeks a text amendment to amend chapter two zoning regulations, article C, zoning text, district classifications and boundaries by adding section ten dash two zero eight one in order to establish a new zoning district, W H dash I warehouse industrial in order to provide for permitted warehouse and industrial uses and the location and regulations of warehouses and industrial uses. It's a text amendment.
Okay. Staff, would you, I think we've already had the public here for this agenda item as well. And staff, would you please go ahead and present this?
Yes, sir. Going to share my screen. Tony, can you allow me to share my screen, please?
You should be able to share it now.
Thank you. And I may be toggling back and forth between two different presentations. I'm gonna start with the intent of the warehouse district, so bear with me, please. In reference to case number twenty twenty M dash zero zero five dash ten, text amendment to create or establish a new zoning districts, W H I warehouse industrial district in order to provide for permitted uses, permitted warehouse and industrial uses and the location and regulations of warehouse and industrial land uses. The intent is to basically provide for warehousing, storage, sale, distribution of goods, conduct and related to commercial and industrial activities within the city. One of the major intents of this new zoning classification is to provide for anticipated outcomes, which will allow for the city to protect and to improve air quality in the city. One of the anticipated outcomes of this new zoning district classification is to allow for environmental benefits from new technologies as well as expanding use of green infrastructure and to limit corridors in which hazardous materials may be transported and stored and housed. The warehouse industrial district standards are listed above. The minimum lot frontage will is proposed at one hundred feet on a public street with access directly from a public street. Height maximums will be seventy-five feet. And there will be requirements for public water and sewer. We will, we are proposing a minimal front yard of forty feet, one adjacent to arterial road, forty-five feet, front yard setback, one adjacent to collector road, and forty feet, one adjacent to a local road. The minimum side yards will be twenty feet and the minimum rear yard will be twenty feet. And we have imposed a new lot, maximum lot coverage on primary accessory structures and impermeable surfaces, which cannot exceed seventy percent of lot area. That is a development standard that is not currently in the zoning ordinance under any zoning classification. And we thought it was important, important to introduce that for soily rosy mitigation as well as, as for runoff and water and sewer possibilities to mitigate water and sewer issues and runoff. Again, it has the minimal height structure, seventy-five feet per primary, thirty-five feet accessory structure, and all telecommunications facilities shall conform with requirements of article six of our current zoning code. We are proposing transparency requirements for ground story for non-residential uses at fifty percent minimum. Upper stories twenty percent and blank walls at a thirty-foot maximum. And we will require entrances to be facing a primary street for aesthetic purposes. Also, within the new category of warehouse industrial district, we are impose, we are proposing architectural design standards. On all roads we're building or parts thereof are visible, all exposed exterior wall siding shall be composed of the following maximum and minimum percentages of materials in each classification. The percentages apply to the siding on each exposed exterior wall for each building visible from the street on which such building is located. And we have broken these down into four different material types. Material type A is to consist of a face brick granite stone, marble, terrazzo, terrazzo, architectural treated reinforcement, concrete slab, either fluted or with exposed concrete insulated windows, walls, stainless steel, porcelain, treated steel, and other permanently finished aluminum. Type B material is consistent of metal panels with baked-on enamel or acrylic finish with substantial maintenance for a period of ten years. Concrete block with either sculpted treatment or stacked bond sculpted material. Type C is consistent reinforced concrete slab, concrete block with either sculpted treatment or stacked bond or rack joints. And type D material is consistent with congregated steel aluminum without finish prescribed of this section, plain concrete block, redwood and other decorative wood. All materials shall be earth tone in color. And these are coupled with the percentages, excuse me, the percentages that we have on this page here. So you can mix and match the type of materials based on these percentages that we have here. And that's to provide for architectural guidelines to ensure that, that there is visual interest in not mundane-looking warehouses within the city. We are also proposing an environmental justice component, which we're using as a tool to accommodate for social justice and social injustice components that have been done in the past for City of East Point, which had, was built as an industrial city. And unfortunately, there are several pockets of the community that have heavy industrial uses right adjacent to residential uses. And so there will be an environmental justice clause within the warehouse industrial district. And number one, when we review these cases, we will be looking for any potential mitigation measures to address disproportionately high and adverse effects dealing with environmental justice issues for clean air. We'll also be looking to reduce pollutants and loading through changes and processes or technologies. We'll also be looking at and reviewing the project for reducing and eliminating other social pollutants and impacts to reduce cumulative effects. We'll be looking for projects and that plan for and address indirect impacts prior to project initiation. So we'll be looking at transportation components. We'll be looking at increased population growths and how the project will impact the community at large as well as adjacent to the subject projects. We'll be providing assistance to the nearest affected area to ensure that it receives at least its fair share of anticipated benefits of proposed actions such as job training, community infrastructure improvements, et cetera. We'll also be looking for changes in the timing of impact causes such as noise, pollutant load to reduce effects on impacted communities. Excuse me, embarrassed. Blocking number six. Number six, we'll also be looking to partner with local medical teams, conduct regular medical monitoring on affected communities and provide treatments and other responses if necessary. So for the environmental justice component, we really want to make sure that the community has a fair opportunity to provide meaningful conversation as, as well as meaningful comments on projects that will impact the community. We talked about design standards or architectural standards. We also have proposed requirements that the project needs to provide for parking reductions and densities, shared parking opportunities, permanent materials to alleviate and address stormwater runoff. We'll be looking for green infrastructure opportunities and low-impact development opportunities as well, such as bioretention islands, stormwater practices, et cetera. We'll be looking for pervious materials and walking paths. Use of pervious materials for driveways. We'll also be looking for green roofs and rain gardens, roof drainage for pervious surface areas. And these are all green infrastructure and low-impact development tools that can be used and easily implemented into large warehouse projects that may be proposed to come into the city. We do have a very, very big issue with stormwater runoff in the city. As a matter of fact, our director, Melissa Etivaria, gave a very extensive overview at the last council meeting on the state of the water sewer facilities of the city. And these efforts will be to help supplement the issues of the hundred-year-old system that City of East Point has in place. We're also looking to preserve natural and vegetative and shade within the lots. Some of the other design mechanisms we'll be looking at are downcast lighting to accommodate dark, dark sky mechanisms, which provide for light pollution and to alleviate light pollution from the high extensive lighting that comes from some of the, the lights that come from the parking areas in the large warehouse areas. And of course, we want to have a screening for any refuge, of course. And then we would like to provide for accommodation for natural and vegetative transitional buffers. And we talked about the combination of masonry, brick and stone, and the different combinations of exterior material that we've proposed for these type of land uses. And then lastly, we have a landscape ordinance, but we'll be looking for non-invasive plants as well that can survive in drought or what have you. And just overall, we're looking for projects and just to screen projects based on them not being, being a clean business, number one, and not having any listing on EPA's echo lists of non-compliance for the state of Georgia. That was one stipulation that we wanted to include in our reviews. And if for some reason that the company or business did have a listing within five years on that inventory list for non-compliance, we will require for them to provide for traffic, environmental water, noise and air impact analysis. And those reports will be used for our criteria for recommendations of approval. We do have a listing of proposed uses for the warehouse industrial permit useless. And these are, these are shown below and I'll just name a couple of the big ones, which is the intent of the ordinance, warehouse and storage, warehouse distribution center, research and development, manufacturing, commercial kitchens, food truck stations and terminals, self-storage, mini warehouse facilities, research and experimental testing laboratories, including medical and dental laboratories, and all types of manufacturing down to repairing, compounding foods, components, et cetera. Those are some of the big permitted uses that we have listed. And I'm going to stop sharing there. And that's the end of my presentation for this item. I'm sorry, it was long.
That's on to the chair. Can you get, can you get, um, Mrs. Smith to move back to that presentation? The one in terms of the environmental, not environmental justice, but the issue you were talking about, permissioned use five years or something, just before you got to the permitted usage. Just, if you could just go back to that, I, I want to just ask a question or two about that, if it's all right, Mr. Chair.
We must have a, a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Fan, Commissioner Fan?
I'll, I'll make a motion for that we, that we accept for discussion.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body approves, recommends approval. Any comments, questions or concerns?
I do, I want to, can you get her to move back to that so I could just?
If you would, please, Ms. Smith. If you would please, Ms. Smith.
Yes, sir, put it back up.
You know the session I'm talking about, Kim?
Yes, I should be able to find it very quickly, one moment please, stipulations and restrictions. For the EPA's echo list and non compliance.
Five year requirement and.
So that is if they have been listed on this list within the last five years, we would then require for them. To provide or submit an impact analysis for traffic, environmental, water, noise and air. That's if they've been listed on this environmental protection, the vision hazardous site inventory list.
Okay, this, this is where my concern is, this is where my concern is. We have houses and and some of you don't understand what I'm saying, that that have been here. That was never on this list at all. Uh and we've had them with the Meredith plant, we've had them with those other plants. What protection would we have based on them uh being on that list based on what? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, help me to understand, staying there, I think some of you guys know where I'm going with that because. We know we deal with the Meredith plant for years and they never were uh cited for years, never was even looked at for years. Even though people complain about, they never did anything to say that they were in violation for years, so. I- i- and it just said these people come from someplace else, I know, but who is going to make sure that this requirement? Is a true requirement because they may not even have any record of them even being violating any environmental issues. That, that's, that's just a concern of mine because we lived through that in this community for years.
Great, that is um and Commissioner Fan, um I did bring Meredith up a few work sessions ago. Um so, but for this particular agenda item, unfortunately, the classification is warehouse industrial. And Meredith wouldn't fall under warehouse industrial, um it would be in a different industrial um zoning area. However, if it were to fall under this particular classification. I would imagine that those existing businesses um would be grandfathered in. And if they were to try to expand or to do any of those things, they would then have to meet this. All of the criteria, the restrictions and stipulations as stated by staff, but is that correct, um Madam Attorney?
Yes, so it would apply to any property that would be potentially rezoned to this WHI zoning district. Um it's my understanding that this stipulation and restriction is only a part of this proposed WHI. Correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, um Kim. Um but if a sitting warehouse is not in this zoning district, district. Then they would not be subject to this requirement. Um so only if they are required to rezone for whatever reason to WHI. Um then they would fall under the stipulations and restrictions portion of this zoning district.
You see, we talk about, you're talking about existing be- businesses, I'm talking about businesses may want to come in under this particular zone.
If they want to come to the city and they would be zoned to this zoning district, then they would have to comply with this stipulations and restriction requirement.
And I do understand that, I'm, I'm very clear on that, but I'm just saying is, who's going to make sure that they're going to be in compliance? With the EPA, you know, because that doesn't mean they came from the loot and moved here, right? And they want this, we don't, who's going to check to see if those, those people in the loop have had problems with this particular. Business that's coming here that may not have any complaints with the EPA. But the surrounding community has been complaining about them, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure out. How do we do it? Because we don't want a, a problem to move to us, we got enough problems already here. But we don't want a problem to move to us, how can we, maybe. You know, that should be something the other in here in terms of how we would do our own investigations or something or something. To make sure that they are in compliance, that there are no complaints from the people where they moving from to here, I'm. I'm just trying to protect us in terms of from the environmental issue, I hope you guys, you know, understand what I'm saying with this because. Just because a person is not on record doesn't mean that they ain't violating nothing. You need to be able to check with someone where they, where they had to make sure that they weren't, that those people were not. Disadvantaged, this is where I want to use disadvantaged by this company, a warehouse. Uh by mitigating whatever, whatever, throwing chemicals out, whatever, whatever, whatever. But I just want to make sure that we have something in there that would. That we could do our own investigation and not depend totally on EPA. Because we know what they've done in the past and not been able to have records because if people, I don't know. Somebody throw the paper away, I don't know, I just think we need to have something internal for us, that's just my two cents with that and I'm done, let's chair.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Fan, um any more comments, questions or concerns? Alright, um the, I have a few, first of all, I'd like to um thank staff for including the refuse screening. And the vegetation, the vegetative buffers, um transitional buffers and also the downcast sliding. Um all of those are very important, particularly um as they get, the structures get closer to residential areas. But the, the um the refuse screening particularly as not only for residential areas, but also for major thoroughfares. And just, you know, roads throughout the city as a part of our city aesthetic and all of those things and so. This is something that I would also encourage for some of the other industrial classifications, I think it's very important. Um can we go back to the screen, um the environmental justice clause? Okay, is this, I mean, is this just semantics, are we talking about community benefits when we talk about this, is that what this is?
So, um the community, but yeah, so the community benefit clause I is another tool. Just like the environmental justice cause, what we're trying, the intent is to accommodate um the lack thereof. Um participation and meaningful input um for underserved uh communities that have been negatively impacted. Um disproportionately from environmental uh projects and businesses over the years. Um so we're, we're using it as, as a tool in order to provide. Um for the community to, to um obtain benefit from these type of projects coming in, so. The answer to your question is, is yes.
Okay, so this is community benefits basically.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to my comment from work session. It stinks. Um I don't like it, I am one hundred percent in favor of community benefits. But not how this is being applied and I think it's arbitrary. I also think that it is akin to contract zoning, which is illegal. And uh when we talk about. The way that, the way that I'm looking at this is if I am a business owner and I would like to relocate or locate my business in the City of East Point. And the zoning classification allows for my type of business to be there. There should not, I should not be levied any other type of. P, this is, this seems very penal, like you're penalizing me. Um when it, as it relates to um businesses coming into areas where there is a residential area. Where, where there's a residential area, um. If the business, if my business was coming in and I needed a variance, I needed to vary from the code. I needed, you know, to do a rezoning or something of that nature. I think that that is very appropriate for a community, a community benefits conversation. But if the law is allowing my business to operate within that zoning classification. Um I think that this is arbitrary, my question would be, first of all, how do we administer? How do we track and how do we make sure that whatever the benefits are, are used in their intended form? So if my business is coming in, then the community is saying, well, we want to get uniforms for Little League, give us five thousand dollars. Then all of a sudden, there's no Little League, what happens to the money, who gets the money, does the money go to the city? Does the money go to the community, who decides who the community is? And then where does the money go, do we know if those communities are established? Five oh one C threes or corporate entities where they have bank accounts and all of those things, it's. If anybody goes out here and says that I'm against community benefits, I will look in your face and tell you you're a liar. Because what I'm saying is, I am in support of community benefits, but not how we're trying to apply it. And I do believe that this is very akin to the contract zoning, which is illegal in the state of Georgia. So all the other things that were presented around the WI, the WHI zoning classification, I am wholeheartedly in support of. But this piece right here, I do not think that this is the best way to achieve that. And I think that it is not really a tool to attract business, I think it is more of a deterrent. Because it could be anything, a community could ask for a hundred thousand dollars to do something, we want to do X, Y and Z. That we've been trying to do, what's the limit on that, who knows the limit and if the businesses would know, we don't want to do a hundred thousand dollars, do that mean they can't come? It's contract zoning. It stinks. Okay, commissioners, the motion on the floor made by.
I made it, Sean.
Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett.
Hey Sean, can I ask one question before we move toward that to the attorney? Is it any way, uh um Madam Attorney, do you believe that you could draft some language to go in there to, in, in terms of maybe Kim? In terms of what I was talking about to protect the community where is that we, we find out that these people are nuisance. This company are nuisance that's trying to come to us versus depending on uh outside entities that we can do our own thing?
Yes, Commissioner, I will uh work with staff and see if we can come up with some language to address that for the uh zoning ordinance.
Alright, well, thank you so very much, I appreciate that, I'm ready, Mr. Chair, I'm ready.
Okay, so with that, do we want to go ahead and move forward with your motion or are you asking for that language to come back and you just?
I'm asking for the language to come back, Mr. Mr. Chair, I want to, I want to make sure the language is actually in there. You know, that, that's just a stickler for me, it should be for most of us, it should be in terms of. We want to make sure that people who are moving to here, want to do business here, that we understand that they're not a nuisance where they coming from and bringing the nuisance to us.
Well, Commissioner Fan, I'm sorry.
Say, um this has been advertised for the December, is it the seventh meeting, Kim? For Mayor and City Council?
Yes, it has.
So this is moving forward for their consideration, so in terms of it coming back to P and Z before then. Um it will not have an opportunity because it has already been advertised for a public hearing before Mayor and City Council.
That's fine, just only thing I want to say to you is that I will be advocating for that.
Okay.
I'll talk to Mayor Council about it so that they can drop it in, it doesn't make any difference with me. But the reality of it is, is I think that that language needs to be added in there.
Okay.
Yeah, but we can move forward, Mr. Mr. Chair.
The motion is to recommend approval or in uh made by Commissioner Fans, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, any more comments, questions or concerns?
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Fields.
Yeah, uh as far as uh enforcement, making sure that um the pollute, you know, I'm, I'm interested in the question of. Having our own agency to actually go out uh based on what Mr. Fan was talking about. And, and, and enforcing some of our uh some, some pollution um controls, is that a possibility? Instead of going to the EPA, you know, we have a, 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 an, an agency, if someone set up to go and monitor these. Uh companies that's being polluted, things of that nature, I mean, do we have any, anything or anybody that can actually go out and do that? To ensure. Clean air, what have you. Attorney, is that, is that possible?
I'm not aware if the city has um a department that handles that, staff would have to address that. Um if there is an entity in place for that, then definitely that's something that's possible, but. Kim, I don't know if you all have any type of monitoring for that?
Um I am not aware that we have it, we have a code enforcement department that covers all of our code of ordinances as well as the zoning ordinance. I am not aware of an environmental entity that specifically goes out to monitor air and uh air quality at this time. We do have a soil erosion and sedimentation officer that looks at all of our buffers. And uh waterways and we have one officer in the water and sewer department that does that, but beyond that. Um I'm unaware of any specific positions for air quality.
Not just the air quality, but uh we, we had some um, some residents come on and talk about. Uh things that's affecting their neighborhood because they're close to these companies that are doing other types and source of pollutions. And um whether or not there's anyone that we can actually send out and speak to them or anything like that. Uh to make them come into compliance or to make, make sure that they're not polluting the environment in any way. That's, that's the question, I don't know, uh if we have that capacity.
I don't, I don't know if we have that, I don't think that we do, I'm not aware of if we do, I don't think, I don't think that we do.
Okay.
Alright, um.
Your chair.
Yes, um yes, uh is that Commissioner Tucker Todd?
Yes, it is, um sure, it's, it just feels like there are some questions that are still kind of floating around. I, I don't feel personally comfortable moving forward, I would rather see this to be deferred, but of course. Uh that's uh to the original uh motion maker, but for me, it feels, I, I don't feel like that I've had the opportunity. With some of the other questions that are coming up to, to fully uh engage in this and, 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 and I would hope that we could. Consider uh a deferral.
Okay, um is, is that a formal friendly, is that a formal request for a friendly amendment to Mr. To Commissioner Fan?
It, it would be, Mr. Chair.
And Commissioner Fan, do you accept?
Oh, I would consider that, but based on the recommendation of the attorney, the attorney said that we, all you said that we could not. Madam Attorney, we cannot defer?
It has to go back to, it has to go to Mayor and City Council for a public hearing because it's been advertised. Um you can make a recommendation that Mayor and City Council defer it back to Planning and Zoning Commission after they have their public hearing. Um and see, you know, what they do with that, but it has been advertised for a public hearing on December seven, so it has to go forward.
No, I'm just confused, again, having been on the commission thirteen or years or so, I've never had anything came before us that we couldn't defer. This is the first I've ever heard of one that's been advertised and that therefore it is requirement that we have no choice but to move it forward. Or even with that condition, would you explain to me why this is unique?
Um I don't think of it as necessarily unique, this is, the zoning procedures act does require that. Um once an uh legal ad has been advertised for a public hearing, that it has to go uh forward before Mayor and City Council. Um Kim, is the December seventh date the date of the ad?
Yes, it has been uh advertised for the December seventh council meeting. Um and then this item um again came before this board. And of the form of just one um advertisement and one item. And it was then broken up into the several that we have here, um.
But Kim, just trying to understand, are, are all items that come before the Planning and Zoning Commission pre-advertised for the next? Which of course is the next progression, is the council, are they all pre-advertised or is this one unique?
Um well, so that, you all know that this item and these uh series of items are part of. Uh the moratorium that has been placed on warehousing and industrial uses I one and I two within the city. And so again, these, this particular item came before this board um several months ago. And it was um brought to our attention that we had misadvertised it. For, I guess, uncertain regen, reasons that it did not meet the, the um requirements of the zoning procedure law. And so um with that being said, this item was already um advertised to move forward. Under that original uh zoning uh case, so when we advertised it under these series of applications. So when we advertised it under these series of applications to meet the zoning procedure law, we went ahead and pre-advertised it, um, for council because the original zoning was due to go to council, um, already. So we preemptively, um, did a, did a re-advertising for council at the same time simultaneously.
Yeah, I get it. I appreciate it.
So, so basically you do have, once that, that ad is in place, the council has to hear the matter within fifteen, no more than forty-five days of the ad being published. And so that's the timeframe that we're working within for this, these, uh, text amendments.
Can I, can I get a little further, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
To, to the, to the attorney, you said that we could, we can make a motion that we, if, we defer, ask council to defer it back to us?
Yeah, so once they hold the public hearing, the most important thing to be in compliance with the state statute, which is the zoning procedures law, is to have a public hearing because that is what has been advertised. Um, now, after the public hearing has been heard, they can continue it. They can defer it back to Planning and Zoning Commission to be heard, you know, if there's other issues that P and Z wants to um, vet out further, they have the discretion to do that. But it has to be a public hearing on December seventh on these text amendments because that is within the fifteen, no more than forty-five day time period um, from the legal ad that's been published on these items.
I'm good. I think we're good on that. The, so Mr. Chair, if I can withdraw my motion, I will draw my motion if the second withdrawals is motion or I accept the motion that was made by, the friendly amendment that was made by Commissioner Tucker, that we defer it, what we defer asking the, 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 um, council to send it back to us for further discussion.
Okay, um, and Commissioner Lovett, does your second still stand? You're on mute? Commissioner Lovett, you're on mute?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can I, may I ask a question before we, I mean, or do I need to answer your question?
Um, but no, I think that you can, you can ask a question before you accept the, um, the friendly, your, your, before you can announce if your second still stand.
And my question, my question is this, and it's probably to, um, Commissioner Tucker Todd, and that is, is your concern not being able to read before, um, it goes to council? Are you, are you concerned about what the attorney is going to write up? Do we need to have maybe a special call meeting just to review that?
Well, we've never, we've never sent one on that we didn't review what we were sending, so, so that would of course be also the, uh, the concerns that were brought up by Commissioner Fan, Commissioner Fields, and the Chair. So it just seems that we need to have a little more conversation in, in my, my opinion, uh, before moving forward.
Mr. Chair, can we just, uh, look at this in terms of maybe having a special call meeting so that we can meet the December date for council?
Okay, um, Madam Attorney, uh, my question is that there is currently a friendly amendment? And, uh, do we need to have that? It's been accepted by the maker of the motion. Do we need to have that a second to still stand for further discussion before we move on?
If there's been a friendly amendment to the original motion, we need a second to that friendly amendment before we can go forward. Otherwise, the original motion continues to be on the floor.
And anybody can second the, um, um, that because the maker of the motion has accepted it, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second for the friendly amendment?
I second it.
Okay, um, so thank you, uh, I have questions, Madam Attorney. Um, oftentimes, we, this body advertises for a public hearing and we hold that public hearing, but we don't act on the actual zoning matter. What would preclude Mayor and Council from doing the same? If they are, if they've got to meet the fifteen to forty-five days, what would prevent them from holding a public hearing but not acting on the matter, just as we have done probably a million and one times?
Right, and they don't have to act. Again, they can continue it. They can, um, make a motion to, you know, defer it. I think what, from what I understand, there is a moratorium in place that expires at the end of the year. So I think the timetable is very short because they do have to make whatever changes they approve before the moratorium expires. So that is in play, but they don't have to necessarily act. I mean, they have the legislative discretion to continue it to another meeting date. Um, the issue is if they do defer it to come back to P and Z, will there be enough time for P and Z to look at it again before the moratorium expires? And, you know, I don't know. Um, because I know there are two regular meeting dates in December for Mayor and City Council. So I don't know if in between those two dates, you all can have a special call meeting possibly. But there is a, an abbreviated period of time for them to make their final decision because of the moratorium that's in place.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Tucker Todd.
But the moratorium is set by the council, not the state. So I guess that's where, you know, i- if, if the council sees fit to extend the moratorium, uh, that's on them.
Yeah, um, that's, that was, that is what my comment was going to be. Um, I am, I am less interested in rushing to, to meet a moratorium that is established by our legislative body. I am far more interested in getting it right. Um, and, uh, that is where my interests lie. I would like for us to be able to address Commissioners Fan's concerns, Commissioners Phil's concerns, and I am still going to have a concern over the environmental justice clause, um. I'm still going to have that concern. I just want us to be, my interest is in wanting to attract business, wanting to make sure that we're not penalizing business and that we're treating business fairly, but also protecting the citizens of East Point. And I think that currently the way that this is drafted, I don't think that we've had enough time to really work those things out. So that's where my concerns are. Um, and I think that, do we have a mad rush, Kim, of applicants for the WHI zoning classification?
Uh, no, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's my concern. So it has been, there is a motion currently on the floor to recommend a deferral that council defers this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, sign aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Here none of the ayes have it. Okay, let's move on to our next agenda item.
Okay. Our next agenda item is item number six. Twenty twenty M dash zero zero six dash ten, applicant in city of East Point. The application is citywide and the applicant seeks a text amendment to amend chapter two, zoning regulations, article C, zoning text, district classification and boundaries by adding section ten dash twenty eighty-two in order to establish a new zoning district MXCI, mixed-use commercial industrial to provide for location and regulation for a mixture of residential, commercial and industrial uses. This item is a text amendment.
Okay, would you go ahead and present that? Because we've had a public hearing for this as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One moment, please. Share my screen. It went there anyway. The intent and scope of the mixed-use commercial industrial district is for regulations to be set forth in this new MXCI with regulations um, in establishing, uh, this new district to provide for areas within the city with development that's consistent with neo-traditional planning practices, which are often defined as pedestrian-oriented buildings, interconnected streets, a mix of uses, housing types and compatible walkable scale. The MXCI district is designed, uh, or proposed to be designed to create compactness to distinguish core areas with character that not only allows for urban forms, but multiple uses within same or shared structure, but also includes street-oriented activity and pedestrian amenities at street level um, of structures. So the development standards for the mixed use, for the proposed mixed-use commercial industrial district will be, um, a height regulation of seventy-five feet. A minimum front yard setback of between a minimum three, maximum twenty feet. Uh, front yard setback, minimum side yard, there are proposed for none. Minimal, minimal rear yard is proposed for five feet. We have received feedback, um, to increase that um, number. And, uh, we did have some amendments, some revisions to the ordinance that increased it to, to twenty feet from the five. A minimum lot area is standing at none and minimum width of lot frontage and width at building line is a hundred feet currently being proposed. Um, some of the uses that will be permitted, that are proposed to be permitted within this new zoning district category are all permitted uses within C one and C two, uh, CR and CL mixed-use districts as well as art gallery, artisan workshops, uh, animal care facilities, uh, banks, bookstores, brew pubs, clubs, lodges, commercial parking lots and garage, excuse me. That is, um, not correct, commercial parking lots and garages, so excuse number ten. Um, community center, buildings, community kitchens, educational, college universities, food truck and food truck stations, grocery stores, hotels, motels prohibited and laundry, dry cleaning, collection stations limited to more than, uh, no more than twenty-five hundred square feet in area. Um, there, here's a, a more extensive list of what, um, we're proposing to be the permitted uses within this district. And I've gone over the development standards. Um, I'll just name a few on this list. Gyms, movie theaters, museums, uh, multi-family dwellings, rooftop gardens, um, nightclubs, um, is a, uh, intended permitted use, but we have got feedback from this. And, um, we are currently proposing for it to be a, a use permit for nightclubs. Um, offices, studios, tasting rooms, cigar, uh, cigar and smoke shops and restaurants and research and experimental, uh, testing labs. We've gone over the development standards and, um, I'll stop there.
Commissioners, you've heard staff's presentation. Can you put the, um, the caption back up?
Yes.
The text amendment caption, please.
Can you see that?
No, that's, it's not shared on the screen.
Okay. Let me see. Nick, again, this item is from the previous, um, cumulative, it's case number. Um, the case number is actually twenty twenty M dash zero zero six dash ten. And this item is from the previous, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, just so that I'm clear, we just went over the WHI, which is the warehouse industrial.
Yes.
Correct, but we have WHI as a part of this caption.
Okay.
Help me with that.
They were, they were combined together before, so I apologize for that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, um, we are perfecting this, um, just so that the record is perfected. So just to be clear, WHI is not a part of this particular piece of zoning. And, uh, Kim is going to also correct the number. So to perfect the record, could you please read the caption that is correct with the correct number and, uh, and which zoning classifications we are adding um, to this particular section, okay?
Okay, I'm gonna toggle between two slides, but I'll start with this. Staff recommends approval of text amendment number twenty twenty M dash zero zero six dash one zero to amend chapter two, article C, in order to establish a new zoning district um, known as MXCI, mixed-use commercial industrial.
Okay.
And, uh, one moment, please. Would you like for me to show the screen of the proposed uses? Or would you like for me to read them? And they are, there's about thirty-eight of, uh, permitted uses.
Okay, um.
I can show the screen?
If you would show the screen.
Okay, are you able to? No, I have to stop and then show again. One second. Okay. Are you able to see the screen? Permitted uses?
The font is quite small.
Okay, let's see if I could, um. Is there a way to zoom? For the purposes of this, I'm just gonna increase the font. Is that better? Are you able to see it?
Um, yeah, that's, um, I can read it. That's, that's better.
Um, and I'll scroll. Let me see, I could do it just a little bit better. Okay, so, um, recommend approval with all permitted uses within C one, C two, CR, CL and MIX districts to include art galleries, artisan, industrial workshops, animal care facilities and veteran offices, grooming facilities, assembly production of electric equipment, banks, bookstores, brew pubs, clubs, lodges, community center buildings, education, including college and universities, uh, laundry and dry cleaning collection stations limited to no more than twenty-five square feet, movie theaters, museums, gyms, exercise facilities, grocery stores, hotels, motels prohibited, collective workspaces, collective workspaces, community kitchens, residential uses. Uh, buildings or premises shall be used for the following non-industrial residential uses and structures, single-family or two-family dwellings, multi-family dwellings, rooftop gardens, newspaper, publishing facilities, makers uses, small-scale specialty uses to include traditional art, artisanal products such as food, household items and clothing, office, business, office, professional, radio and television broadcast stations, research and development, restaurant, bar, grills, taverns, cafes, drive-ins, fast food facilities, similar eating and drinking establishment, tasty rooms, training facilities, retail, smoke shops, data centers, specialty food shops. These last ones are studio, paint, glass and wallpaper stores, food, truck and food, truck stations and industrial centers. Those are proposed permitted uses within the new mixed-use commercial industrial district.
Okay. Um, okay, Commissioners, you've, um, heard the presentation from staff. Kim, could you also just go back and put up the, the caption so that, um, that it's present? So that that is present. Commissioners, at this time, in a turn of motion, the motion should made a form of recommendation, please. Let us not all speak at once. I can't hear everybody. Yes, Commissioner Fan.
I want to make a recommendation for approval, but I do have a couple of questions I gotta ask about this too.
Okay, Commissioner Fan is making a motion to recommend approval. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Miller, that this body recommends approval. Any comments, questions or concerns?
I do have. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only question I have is about the food trucks in this zoning. Where would the food trucks be? Would they would they have a a place where they park, would it be parking on the streets? Would it be allowed to park on the street to 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 provide food? Would they have to have a lot, be on a lot? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how that's gonna work.
Our current food or food truck ordinance provides for development guidelines on where and how these. Trucks are are to be parked and can be parked, so we have guidelines in order to to regulate. How and where and when they are able to. Park within the different zoning districts.
In different zones, I'm talking about this zoning district here. This this one here is an established zoning district that's allowed for it, right?
This is a proposed new zoning district. This zoning district does not exist.
At all.
At all. It is in order to establish a new zoning district called MXCI, which is mixed-use commercial industrial.
Okay, I'm with you. I'm with you. Getting tired, but I'm with you. The 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 question here is. That I know you said it established place where they can do it, what time or what have you. I just want to make sure that the downtown area with the downtown area now be complete. The a part of this MXC one district.
The downtown area is a sub-area that we are proposing for MXCI to be a typical zoning district allowed. It is, that is one of the the tax amendments that we have coming up that will impact the the. Comprehensive plan. So yes, it is intended to allow for this use to be in the the downtown area as a a sub.
The other thing, I'm not against food trucks. I'm just saying is that because of the way East Point is configured. Downtown having food trucks on the street, you know, I mean downtown, I'm just trying to figure out that that's, I'm not against food trucks. I visit them frequently. Matter of fact, they have one on Silver Road, they have a whole lot where they have about four or five food trucks. And they have lines of people out there every day, so I'm just trying to get a, I guess, a visual in terms of where these trucks would go. Would they be on a lot? Would they be in the street? I'm just, you know.
Well, currently in the downtown area, they're allowed on, I believe, one or two streets. And it's regulated to where there is a stated amount of time that they'll they're allowed to be there. So they would have to come through the planning and community development department for an permit. In order to establish locating anywhere in the city, they can't just. Drive up and open up business anywhere. There are regulations.
Even if.
Currently in place for food trucks.
Even this zone, it would be the same thing.
Yes, yes.
All right, I'm good. I'm good.
I have a question. If we're gonna have a mixed district that has restaurants, am I correct on that?
Yes, restaurants are permitted use within this proposed district.
Well, then why would we need food trucks also to be included in that mixed use? If we have the restaurants, that'd be taking business away from them.
To give the opportunity for. Other and just many opportunities for citizens to have food within the city. It's just another option. It'd be another option, just like you have grocery stores and there are lots of different types of grocery stores. You have former markets. It's just another option for getting food within the city East Point.
Yeah, but I understand. But looking at this rendition, you know, I see a nice little restaurant there. And if I had a restaurant in this new district, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be wanting the food truck to pull up next to it someplace. You know, it'll take it, take, take away my business.
I I completely understand what you're saying, and there are a lot of brick-and-mortar restaurants that actually have their own food trucks as well. So it's it's just another option, and I completely understand where you're coming from as well.
Thank you.
I would, I would move to strike food trucks from that list.
Is that in a form of a motion?
The motion that is currently on the floor is not that motion. The motion that is currently on the floor is to approve. And that's been moved by Commissioner Fan. It's been seconded by Commissioner Miller. Okay, um, all right, all right. Kim, I just want to ask about, can you tell me just where would we, what part of the city? Would are we thinking that this new zoning district would apply? And the reason I'm asking that question is because I want to go back to your permitted use. List.
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we know where we potentially like to apply this zoning district?
Yes, let me, I'm going, this is gonna come up in in another set of slides, but. Can you see? I have to stop sharing to share again, excuse me. Can you see my screen?
Yes, oh, yes, can now.
Okay, so. Now I can't see what's coming next, but okay, so we are recommending that the town center sub-area downtown area. Will be, will include this new MXCI district. If you see the highlight here, typical zoning districts, it has R T, R two, R three, R four, C R, M I X. And E I and C L and I O, I mean, excuse me, O I T. We are recommending to include M X I in the typical zoning districts list for the downtown sub-area one for town center.
Downtown so the everyone, okay, that's what I was hoping to hear. So can you go to the list of permitted uses?
Yes, I'm gonna have to. Stop sharing. Oh, wait, actually, we're over here.
And if you could scroll down, permitted uses.
Yes. Okay, so it starts there.
Keep going, keep going.
Oh, more, okay.
Yeah, more, more. Because I want to go down, okay, when we get to restaurants, right? Restaurants, bars, grills, taverns, cafes, drive-ins. To me, a drive-in is a movie theater. Are we talking about drive-throughs?
Yes.
Okay, so we just talked about improving air quality for the city of East Point, right? And we do know that drive-through restaurants are one of the biggest polluters, air polluters, right?
Yes.
So I'm trying to figure out, that's a contradiction. So most progressive cities are not having drive-throughs in their downtown area. They are air pollutants. Cars are sitting in line, just running and running and running and running. And so we just talked about wanting to improve the air quality, but then we want to include drive-throughs in a downtown area.
L A.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Fan.
I say L A.
It's just air pollution. You're just asking for more air pollution. And a part of what we're trying to create is we're trying to create environments where we're less in vehicles and more pedestrian. And so particularly in the downtown area, so we want people to visit the art galleries and the artists and shops and all of those things. You don't want them to be in a car trying to go through, and then when you have to create a drive-through for a restaurant. That takes up valuable land that could be used for something else to attract more people to walk. So it's a contradiction.
Okay.
And so so right now, the motion is to approve as is. And so Commissioner Fan, I don't know if you want to accept that strike as a part of.
Oh, yeah, I do. I do. I don't want it to be L A. I don't want it to be L A.
And Commissioner Miller, does your second still stand?
My second still stands.
All right. Are there? The the issue was, I I didn't want to speak to the food truck issue Commissioner Fields. As opposed to the food truck issues, I'm in favor of food trucks because it is, I don't think that it takes away from restaurants. I think of a food truck like of housing. Not everyone wants to live in a single-family detached house. Not everyone wants to live in a condo. Not everyone wants to live in a trailer. We have to provide a mix. And so not everyone wants to go to a sit-down restaurant. People like to maybe go out. There could be a concert downtown, grab something from a food truck. They may not want to go through the whole process of a reservation, a sit-down and all of those things. I think it helps to attract. And it's a part of the synergy that we're trying to create.
Just for your your information, these are the districts that currently allow food trucks. And I was speaking of the couple of streets in the downtown area that currently allow food trucks, which is the west side of Main Street. Between West Cleveland Avenue and Ware Avenue, and there's a two-hour limit. So we have an extensive ordinance on food trucks. Regulations and limits within the city.
Yeah, when they view the food trucks, they're using a vent downtown on that, on those streets when they let those trucks down there. I mean, what what we're talking about now is, you know, people putting food trucks up and it may be hours doing lunch hour or something like that. Because when we talk about a food desert, we got a restaurant desert too. So food trucks wouldn't be a problem for me because people really would go to those food trucks. Because we don't have any restaurants downtown really for people to go to, other than what Sean just talking about, the drive-throughs with Taco Pete. And and Taco Bell, and I mean, we really don't have the restaurants downtown. I mean, and so I mean, I think that food, that's why I was asking the question about food trucks, where would they be at? Because if they're down there at lunchtime, it may, people may want to go, you know, to those food trucks. That's why, that's the only reason I was asking that question. I'm not against food trucks, and that would be walking truck traffic and foot traffic also too, as Sean just talked about. Going to those food trucks to get whatever they sell.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. The motion on the floor is to approve as stated by staff. And having strike, having drive-throughs taking out of the permitted uses. And that motion was made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the ayes, have it. Motion carries. Our next agenda item.
Okay, excuse me, sir. Says valuable information. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Our next item. Our next item is item number seven, twenty twenty M dash zero zero seven dash one zero. It is, the applicant is the city of East Point. This text amendment is citywide. The applicant seeks a text amendment to amend chapter two. Zoning regulations, article C, zoning district, classification and boundaries in order to amend section ten dash two zero seven nine. I light industrial district to eliminate certain permitted uses and to require use permits for certain uses within the I one industrial zoning districts. This is a text amendment. And. To go. Hmm, apologize. Okay. Okay, Steve, I'm sorry. It's toggled in between two different presentations. Oh goodness, okay. Some reason it's not letting me show. It's very hard to see for me to see. Tony, do you have the I one list? This one is biting me.
Are you trying to zoom in?
Yeah.
Are you doing control? There's a thing at the bottom, right? It looks like a toggle at the bottom right of screens. Or if you go to view and click zoom in. At the top. The versus slideshow.
Okay, unfortunately, if I go to current slide, it's gonna pop out of.
No, go to view, where it says at the top, where it says city council work session presentation. Scroll always to the top of your screen.
Are you all able to see the listing at all? I know it's very, very small. I can read them out to you. Because if I hit this button, it's gonna, oh, okay. Can you hear? I know that's kind of small too, but are you able to see it?
It's better.
I guess I can see it. I can see it, Kim.
Okay, all righty, so let's, okay, here we go. So the the proposed permitted uses. Within the I one district that we're proposing, these uses are currently permitted uses within I one. And these are the uses that we are proposing to pull out and will require a use permit. For I one. And number one is the manufacturing permitted use in all types of manufacturing. Newspaper and publishing facilities, printing. And publishing and reproduction, reproduction establishments, research and experimental testing labs. Repair shops, food processing plants, gas station mini-marts. Laundry, light accessory and fabrication uses, truck terminals, basic wood processing, including sawmills. Planting mills, veneering and laminating wood. A battery manufacturing. I just want to say that we actually removed the battery manufacturing from a permanent use at all. a battery manufacturing. I just want to say that, um, we actually removed the battery manufacturing from a permanent use at all. Not just as a, a use permit requirement, but we removed that. We received some feedback in reference to that use. Cement products, manufacturing and production and ready mix, concrete. We did move that to use permit as well as the cooperage, uh, and bottling works as well as the store. Well, no, um, cement products and manufacturing and the, the cooperage and bottling works, we moved those to permitted, uh, use permits. But I, we would like to obtain, um, your feedback on that because we've received some feedback to remove those as per, as a permitted use or a, um, use permit. And then, um, for fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, those uses have been removed as permitted uses or use permit uses within the I one. And I'm hoping that I can pull up the actual text amendment where we can read this off clearly for your benefit.
If I care for some coffee, like some of y'all getting sleepy over there.
Okay, so I'm. This is tedious, tedious work, but, but it's much, much appreciated. We appreciate. Okay. So this, um, is a better, this, this should be a lot better for us to, to understand. So we have these permitted uses here, for the I one, which is, um, amber lamps and emergency, uh, services, animal hospital and kennels, animal grooming shops, artisan workshops, automobile truck and sales, and we have stipulations for, um, how they can be approved. We have automobile trailer and boat sales with a few stipulations on criteria on how they can be approved. We have automobile truck repair services as well with another set of stipulations on how they can be approved. Automobile towing, bookbinding and related work. Carnival, video, horse show, shooting and athletic events. Car wash with stipulations on how they can be approved. Cultural facilities, drive-in movie theaters, dwellings, uh, for residents of watchmaker and caretaker employed on the premises. Education, college, university, K one through twelve, technical college and vocational schools, electric supply store, farm equipment sales, home appliance repair, diaper service and garment processing alteration repair, lumber, hardwood and building material establishments with the criteria point for how they can be approved. Business, office, professional, paint, glass and wallpaper stores. Um, also included in permitted uses for plumbing, uh, for I one is plumbing, printing, research and establishing, uh, experimental testing, radio, television, um, broadcasting services. The, uh, railroad station for freights, uh, the barn grills with stipulations for drive-throughs, restaurants. I'm gonna highlight that. And then, um, self-storage, mini warehouse facilities, taxi stands and veterinarian clinics as well as data centers for our permanent uses. I mean, excuse me, for our use permits. If you look here, we have items one through seven. Those are current use permits within the I one, uh, zoning district classification. All of these new ones here are eight through fifteen. And I'm gonna list them because this is what the change is to the ordinance. This is the actual text amendment to this ordinance. These uses were original I one permitted uses. We are proposing to now have commercial greenhouses as a use permit. Gas station mini-mart as a use permit, light assembly manufacturing as a use permit, manufacturing, fuel and ice manufacturing wholesalers, warehousing and storage and wholesale trade and distribution establishments as well as truck terminals. All as, uh, use permits to where they would have to come before your body for recommendation and then on to mayor and council for a decision. So these items eight through fifteen are what will be changing, um, from the current I one section for permitted uses.
Uh, Kim?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, um, can you go back to the caption, please?
Okay, Tony, are you able to go to the presentation? And, let's see.
Tony, on mute.
Director Smith, where did you get that one from? Are you able to send it to me?
What I'm able to do, are you able to go into the staff analysis and get the actual recommendation? For the I one zoning district text amendment?
You have a text amendment?
Yes, for, let me tell you what item number. It's for twenty twenty M zero zero seven dash one zero.
While Mr. Austin is doing this, um, I will say this to staff. We're going to have to clean up these presentations. Um, so, um, our meeting is very long tonight. There are a lot of cases that are very involved and there's been a lot of great lively discussion. Um, and, uh, I appreciate that on behalf of the commissioners. But as we continue to have our meetings, I want us to be respectful of the time of everyone. And so we are having to deal with a lot of logistical issues. So I will ask that staff, you work, you know, very diligently to clean up the presentations and to work out the logistical issues. One of the other things that I am a little concerned about this evening is, Kim, when we are going through, um, for instance, tonight, we had several instances with their uses and things of that nature. And, um, we were, there were comments saying, well, this won't be in there or that won't be in there. My concern with that is I always want to make sure that we are perfecting the record to the best of our ability, just in case there are any lawsuits. And so I don't want things to be confused like, oh, well, we presented that, but we said that's gonna go out. So when we do make these presentations, I just want to make sure that they are as thorough as possible so we can try to alleviate any of those things to the best that we can, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so this is the caption. Kim, was this also the, um, the zoning matter where we had a lot of discussion around, um, community benefits? And then also, um, there was some concern about whether, what we were proposing and how that would compare to the commercial zoning.
I want, no, this is not that item. The, um, proposed zoning district for warehouse industrial is the, uh, district that would have the community benefits component and the environmental justice components to it. The one that was deferred or proposed to be deferred.
Oh, it was deferred?
Yes.
And, uh, okay, so can we go ahead and read the captions so that we'll know what we're looking for in terms of a motion?
Yes. Tony, were you able, or, oh, it's up on the screen. Do you have the, the staff recommendation at the end?
This is from the fourth, um.
Your staff recommends approval for a text amendment to amend chapter two zoning regulations, article C, zoning tax, district classification and boundaries in order to amend section ten dash two zero seven nine, I one light industrial district to eliminate certain permitted uses and to require a use permit for certain uses within the I one light industrial zoning district.
Okay, so this is gonna go back to what I was just saying. So I know that there was a list that was read, but then some of those that, that it was ma- mentioned that they would not be included in this. So moving forward, then when we are talking about the uses for something, there needs to be a clear list. And that list needs to be vetted by your team. Uh, your team of professionals, you can vet that list. And I also think that a very clear way to display that is for any of those uses that are gonna require a use permit, you can have that these are permitted, these are permitted with a use permit. Because now I don't remember
Okay.
what was, what was allowed because everything that was on the screen, some things are and some things aren't. And so for me, I'm uneasy about that, but, um, that's just me. So commissioners, you've heard, um, the caption, uh, entertain a motion.
Um, I, I'm, I, I apologize. I know that at the, um, the work session, there was a, um, ask to to add data centers and, um, and gyms to, um, the list. And I'm, it's included, it's included in here, but I'm not sure if I read it out for the record.
Okay, um, at this point, she did, you, you, you read it, Commissioner love it, you, um, can vouch. Okay, so, um, data centers and gyms. So again, at this point, what goes forward, if we approve this, I don't really know everything that's in there. That just might be me.
Can I say, so I know we used that in the news, but the most of what you can say, what you have to say, I just need to say what I need to say with all the votes in this table. But the reality of it is, you're in this chair here, that was some things that came away that she said. And we may want to look at it and, and have some discussions about what or not we want to take it out because there was some discussing from other people coming to take a certain.
Right, we can't hear you.
Lush.
Yeah.
Crackling.
We lost, yeah, you, we lost your audio and you were crackling.
Mm-hmm.
We can't hear you.
You're on mute now. Unmute yourself. Unmute yourself now, because now you're on mute, okay?
We still can't hear him.
No, we can't. He knows. But I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear what he had to say, um.
Yeah, because he has.
And so, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's a little unfortunate that we cannot hear him. We all want to, wanna eat first. So it is unfortunate. I don't know what Commissioner Fan, um, was saying or wanted to say. He was crackling and then I lost his, we lost his audio. Um, okay, so commissioners, at this time, entertain a motion. The motion can be whatever you like. We could approve, deny, defer, table, it can be whatever you like. But I want us to do something, um, just a time check. It is exactly ten o'clock according to Apple phones.
Yeah.
Is this? Is this a motion for, um, number twenty twenty M double O seven ten?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Twenty twenty M double O seven dash ten.
All right, so you, you looking for a motion on that?
Uh, entertain a motion, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept, um, item number twenty twenty M double O seven ten.
Okay, it's a text amendment, so Commissioner Fields, the motion is in form of a recommendation. So is it true that your motion is to recommend approval? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Are there any other motions?
I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve with a clear, I mean, I'm sorry, to defer, um, with, you know, because we need a clear list, um.
It seems like that's what Commissioner Fan was also, yes, asking. Okay, um, so Commissioner McKnight is asking that we defer, um, this agenda item. And, um, and Commissioner Miller has seconded the motion. Any comments, questions or concerns? All in favor, sound aye.
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 Okay, Commissioner Fan is giving thumbs up for an aye. Is that, is that a aye? He says yes. All, all opposed, uh, Commissioner Ross, I mean, um, Attorney Ross?
She's unmuted.
Audio.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, so is it the body's motion to make a recommendation to defer since this has also been advertised?
Yes, we are, we are deferring, so we're not sending forward an approval or denial. We are deferring.
Just like the W H, W H I.
That is correct.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I, I'm sorry, and I do, oh, can I add a com- comment question? Okay.
I just want to be sure that I have this Commissioner McKnight. Commissioner McKnight has made the recommendation to defer. Commissioner Miller has seconded. Okay, you now can go, Commissioner McKnight.
Thank you. I just have a, um, a question of concern. And, and Sean, you mentioned it earlier, um. I don't, I don't know, it seems like we're rushing some things, um, to council. And I just wanted to know, um, Ms. Ross, with although we're making these deferrals and because it's been advertised to go to council, um, if they do not defer and make a decision based off of, you know, these, the text amendments that come before them, can decisions be made at council without, um, I guess the, us actually having a clear picture on what, you know, recommendations. That's, that's my biggest concern. It's just like, would the community have an opportunity to say, you know, as, as a commissioner body, would we have that opportunity to say, you know, actually make our recommendations without, um, council knowing our choice?
Well, I think, um, with the way that the ordinance is written, your recommendations. Well, I think with the way that the ordinance is written, your recommendations and the specifics as to your recommendations to defer will be included. To mayor and city council, but to answer your initial question, yes, mayor and city council does have the. Discretion to go forward on these tax amendments if they so choose to. But your recommendation to defer obviously will be part of the consideration. And they could, you know, defer it back to P and Z for further discussion or deliberation. But they could, if they choose to, go forward on these tax amendments.
Another question, please, on, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fields, yeah, awesome.
Who, who, who writes these? Amendments, the tax amendments, you know, who, who's the author of these?
Our staff and we get the assistance of legal.
Staff must be getting a direction from someplace to write them. So, so I'm just trying to figure out. Um, you know, if they're presented to us in this particular way, then we can't seem to figure out. Um, you know, they're ambiguous in some, some cases and not clear. How, how can we overcome that?
I think it goes back to what I was saying earlier. This has to be tightened up. I think that every single commissioner should be very, very clear about what we are voting on. And I think that right now we just are not.
We're not.
And so this has to be tightened up. If it's not tightened up, then I would like for everybody to be very professional in these meetings, please. If, if this is not tied up, then. It, I feel that we have no choice but to defer. I, I can promise you this here. I can promise you this here. There are a million things that I think all of us could be doing, but we have chosen to serve our community in this fashion. And so if we're asked to act on legislation or policy or text amendments or zoning matters. Please provide us all the information in a clear and concise manner so that we might be able to do that. I am not interested in going through a motion to say that we moved this along. Because at the end of the day, we're all members of this body. It's just something come back, then we're gonna look at it, so, oh, is that what we passed? I want us to be very clear about our recommendations.
And I'd also like to.
Have to stand in that.
Yes, yes, sir. And I'd also like to state the fact that Valerie Ross, you know, the, our, our legal person says that. The city council can act on it anyway.
You know. They have the legislative power to do that. They do. Um, and that's, that's outside of our realm, but I want to make sure that whatever we send to them, that we've done our due diligence.
Yes, sir.
That's what, I, I just want to make sure that we've done our due diligence. And so that may not be popular for some. I'm not interested in popularity.
Never mind.
At all. I just want to do what is right. I want to make sure that whatever we're sending forward, that we are very clear about what we're sending forward.
Thank you.
Correct. And then secondly, I know it's getting late too. There's some hands raised in the chat. I don't know if anyone is addressing those, so when do we do that?
And, so we don't have a public hearing for these, Commissioner McKnight?
Okay, gotcha.
So, yes, I think that with this platform.
Right.
Participants or attendees have the ability to send a chat, but they do not have the opportunity outside of a public hearing to speak on the matters.
Okay, I just want to make sure we cover it now, basically. Thank you.
You're welcome. There's a motion on the floor to defer. The motion is made by Commissioner McKnight, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the ayes have it. Motion is deferred. Recommendation is to defer. Let's move on to our next agenda item, please.
Yes, Chairman, it's item.
Uh, question?
I think it's the, I think it's the last one, Commissioner Fan. Is this our last agenda item, our last case?
It's not.
Yeah, we got.
It's not?
It's not even close.
Fourteen agenda items here.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yes. The next item, we're at number eight.
No, this is gonna be tightened up, y'all. Well.
The next agenda item is item number eight, twenty twenty M dash zero zero eight dash one zero, City of East Point. This tax amendment is citywide. The applicant seeks a tax amendment to amend chapter two zoning regulations, article C. Zoning text district classification and boundaries in order to amend section ten dash two zero eight zero. I one heavy industrial districts to eliminate certain permitted uses to require use permits within certain uses. This is a tax amendment. Just to. Make this, this easier, we had to include the I two zoning district as a tax amendment. Because the zoning ordinance is written cumulatively, so all I one permitted uses are automatically a perma- or permitted use in I two. So those uses that were named as use permits. Within the I one district are also use permits within the I two zoning district. So. The only change is. Within the I one permitted uses that are automatically included as permitted uses in I two. And Ms. Valerie, if you're able to explain that better to me, I would, I would appreciate if you could explain it a little better.
Now, that's, I mean, you, you explained it correctly. There's a portion of the I two zoning district that allows for I one to be permitted uses automatically. Um, and some of the uses that have, that are currently permitted uses in I two. Um, staff has determined to make some of them use permits. And keep or delete some of the other current permitted uses. So. It's the same process that I've been reviewing from staff in terms of permitted uses. Either being deleted from the current I one or I two zoning ordinances or becoming use permit uses.
Oh, really? Okay, go ahead.
I, I would like to recommend that we break these up into different sessions, because once we go through all of these different permitted uses, we have questions about them. And it takes time to actually sort through them and find out exactly what they're saying, what we're talking about. And I think this is just going too fast to be, you know, to be so comprehensive. And it's affecting so many businesses, you know, the, as well as the environmental portion of this and everything. And for us to make intelligent decisions on this, I think we need to slow down. Um, I, I would prefer to make a motion that we adjourn and reestablish, and, and reestablish. A, a more. A slower process for these zoning changes, because these are, you know, these are things that's gonna affect the city all into the future. I mean, for us to just say, yes, 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 or no, 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 defer, come back. It, it's, I think it's a waste of time and it's not very productive, I don't believe. So, you know, that's, that's, that's my, my decision, you know, that's my comment on that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fields. At the moment, my concern is that Commissioner Fields, your, your motion would require a second. Um, as it relates to an adjournment and I don't know if there is a second. Is there a second? Okay, there's not a second. My concern, however, is that. I think a part of this, I think we're gonna start, we've already lost Commissioner Tucker Todd, we've already lost Commissioner Fan. We're gonna lose a quorum. So if other commissioners have to leave, we're gonna lose a quorum, we're not gonna be able to hear these cases. And again, I think a part of this is that I don't feel like our ship is tight right now. So I think that there's some hesitancy for commissioners, myself included, to want to move these forward. I think that these are all text amendments and they're going to require quite a bit of discussion. And. My question of staff would be, are these all tight? And ready for presentation? Okay, so.
Was that a question to me? I'm sorry.
Of, of staff, yes.
That was a question. So let me look at the, the remainder of them. Because the remainder of the tax amendments that we have are all tied to the previous ones that you all have already.
Deferred.
Made a action on, to take an action on, one way or other. We have two, can you put the, the agenda up, Tony?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner McKnight.
Do we have a quorum? I don't think.
Uh, currently, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. We've got six.
It's about to be five. I had a, I have like a twenty minute window and that's as, that's as long as I can.
Okay, so.
So to answer your question, Chair, we have. We stopped at I two. So number nine is actually the use permit section of. Number seven. So the use permits that I went over. Is, this is just a repeat. The way that it was broken out, it, it, they overlap, but it's also repetitive. I don't know if the attorney could explain it better to how all these were. Broken out into different sections for us to take action on them separately, but they all are really very closely tied together. Um, number nine is the I two portion of the I one that had to be included, because all of I one uses are included in I. Uh, two uses, so we had to include that as well. So I would say that number seven, number eight, number nine, and number ten are. They're not the same item legally, but they're all intertwined together. You can't really do one without the other. Um, item eleven is the map amendment requesting to include. The MXCI and the new proposed W H I on our zoning map. So that's just a technicality that if these are approved, they have to have a place on our zoning map. And then item number twelve. I went over prematurely, but these, this is basically a tax amendment to include these new. Uses within the comprehensive plan as new uses to be established as zoning, typical zoning districts. Item number thirteen and fourteen are short-term rental ordinances. So. Item, again, item number seven, eight, nine, and ten, they're very, very closely intertwined.
So because we deferred part of it, we really can't do the others. So after ten, what's left?
After ten and eleven, so number ten is the zoning map amendment. No, it's not. Number eleven is the zoning map amendment and then number twelve is the comprehensive plan. Um, map amendment for the new proposed zoning districts.
Okay, so we can't do eleven and twelve either, because I think we deferred that. Already for, right? Um, for the mixed use.
Right, you may not want to make a recommendation for items that you deferred.
All right.
So it may be best, and it's just my opinion, looking at the rest of the agenda to move, well, make actions on these items, seven through.
Twelve.
Through twelve, yes. And, and then go ahead and jump to thirteen and fourteen. But that's just looking at the agenda. Of course, it's, it's your pleasure.
So how to move forward? What do we need to do? Is Valerie still?
I'm here.
So for us to move forward, because we can't really do one without the other, for seven through ten and eleven and twelve, so are we? Are we making a? Recommendation to defer all, you know, all of it? We have to do each one of them individually? What's the best course?
You can sound each case separately, but make the motion to defer. So you're now at heavy industrial I two. Which is related to the W H I and I one. If it's the pleasure of the board, you can make a motion to defer. Um, and then the following one is. Dealing with the use permit, administrative permit, text amendments, and you can also make a motion for. That to be deferred, if that's the board's pleasure, and that's for twenty twenty M. Zero zero nine one zero, I believe. Is that correct, Kim? My agenda seems to be right.
Yes, that's correct.
And then the next one in regards to I two. So you can just sound them separately. And your motion can be the same for each one, if that's what, if that's how you would like to handle it. Because they're, they are all interrelated.
Right. Okay.
Starting with seven. So we stopped at item number eight, twenty twenty M dash zero zero eight dash one zero, which is the I two. Uh, zoning district that's intertwined with the I one.
Okay, um, that's interto- that's intertwined with which one?
With the I one, the previous case number, which is.
That we deferred, all right.
Yes, correct.
So number eight, and then what else is connected to that?
Number, item number nine, which is twenty twenty M zero zero nine dash ten.
Okay.
And then twenty twenty M zero one zero dash one zero. This is the use permit. Section. For the I two. So again, items. Seven through. Twelve are all. Interconnected based on the actions that you've taken so far.
Mister Chair, I'm gonna need to leave.
Okay, um, thank you so much, Commissioner Miller. Let the record reflect that. We have thus far lost Commissioner Fan and now Commissioner Miller.
I'm sorry, I have to leave.
Okay, no worries. Um, I understand. Any other commissioners?
Yes, I need to leave as well.
Okay, um, one, two. One, two, three.
Three.
Okay, I'm sorry, love it.
No, I was just saying three. We've lost three.
Right, so we would.
Four.
We would lose, right, we've, we've lost four. We've lost Commissioner Fan, Commissioner Tucker Todd. And now Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Bell, so that would render us without a quorum.
And you, and the commissioner stay to make a motion to get these.
Did they leave already?
Kim, we, would be, if, if Commissioner Bell needs to leave. We just say that for the remainder of the cases. Um, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on the agenda as printed, then a motion can be made to defer those.
Yes, let's just.
We can get that business done before Commissioner Bell has to leave, okay?
Are you deferring the short-term rental items, which thir- which is thirteen and fourteen?
Yes, we're about to lose a quorum, so we wouldn't be able to.
Okay, okay, okay. Understood.
Commissioner Love it.
Um, so we're deferring nine through fourteen?
Yes.
Yes, um, if that is the motion, is that your motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we defer um items nine through fourteen to a new date.
Okay, you defer, um, you make a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and is there a particular date? Do you want this to be time certain or just a deferral?
Personally, I would prefer a date.
Okay, what is your date?
Um, I would say a date to be determined after we poll the commissioners.
Okay, um.
And what I'm looking at is a special call meeting just to clean this up.
Okay, so you want to make sure that we have um that we would be able to establish a quorum to hear the cases?
Yes.
Okay, um, Kim, for items, okay, there's been a motion made by Commissioner Love it that this body defers the agenda items as presented, numbers nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. The motion was made by Commissioner Love it, seconded by Commissioner McKnight. Question of staff, all of these are text amendments and all of them, we've had public hearings for each of those already. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so um we will be fine there. Okay, so all in favor, sound aye for the deferral.
Aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the ayes have it. Um, before Commissioner Bell, I know you said that you needed to go, but if you could just hold on one second, um, because I would like to make an official motion for adjournment and if you leave, then we don't have enough to officially adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
As we move on, Commissioner Love it, second by Commissioner Phil, that this meeting is adjourned for November nineteenth, twenty twenty. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned. Okay, um, so staff, what we need to do is we need to make sure that for all of the items that were deferred, nine through fourteen, we need to poll the commissioners so that we can get another meeting established. Um, and so we want to make, we put forth a good faith effort to do that so that we can act on these items and then dispose of them um in their proper fashion.
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right, um, I'm going to go back to, we've got to tighten up on all ends. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Good night. Have a good evening.
Thank you.